Every, every subdivision of the city is everything that the city wants. Like they're left and then when it comes in, there's something different that they want. So I have to go back in and there's like fifth or sixth of the land that has been really nowhere.
Each of your clothes like.
I know, I'm close and most things we like each other.
Right.
Business.
I don't know, I don't think so, I didn't try.
It turns on walkers.
I just grabbed something I need to put.
West.
It happens in this building. Your mat seat till it gets here.
All I expected was David, Rihanna, Colin.
I've never heard of you.
Different. That's so bad. Coming in from the west.
So last Thursday, last Tuesday, you remember the voices?
I heard. I can hear over it every day. It's like this.
Jesus, look at this. From the time you took that. Be high.
Hallie mentioned she'll probably.
Twenty minutes. You get from Davie to Pavinga. My house.
You find that, you find out who your friends are.
My friends are still on your list. Far right.
So it's right behind them now?
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, the far left.
I looked in the far left too, because I thought maybe I got it wrong. I couldn't see it. So you can, you can show me where on the way out, still back.
It might be.
Go by and be waiting to.
Because nobody's letting them in.
Yeah.
But I know where they stash their carts.
Actually, I can still tell why.
They take their carts. They just go to the table.
Make sure they're muted first.
Probably a good idea.
Hi, girl.
You got my shirt off. Well, you left early enough to get weird little traffic jam. Good for you.
I'm serious.
It's terrible.
Yeah, hi.
Recording in progress.
My wife came home. I don't know why. I sent them all the way up to Port and you know, he didn't come home.
It takes like twenty eight, thirty forty minutes. What's going on? Just sneaking over here to take a few notes. All that. Thinking about it.
It's gonna be so.
I guess.
Wait for that before you go out. Did we get the way?
Eight dollars.
No. I go west. Come on.
Okay, let's get started. We have a limited time before we have to go into State Council. So tonight, what we want to do, Spencer's gonna take the first part of the program here and go over training on, I'm not sure which part of it, but it'll be basically council training, planning and zoning, rules and regulations thing that you need to follow. After he is finished with that, then I'm gonna take a little bit of time and show you guys, someone who's already seen it, uh, my statistics on what zones, how many acres in each one of them, and how those statistics play out in some of the choices we make or some of the decisions we have to make with the city. Yeah, I can go first. We'll switch and do it. He's gotta go do something quick, so I will switch and do mine first.
County business. Not fun.
Before I get into that, though, I want to take a minute and talk a little bit about the new law that has come down from the state on the area of impact. They have made some major changes in that. And one of the things that's going to affect us as a city, we're gonna have to go in and modify a little bit how we interact with the county. So we're gonna have some code changes that will come in front of you guys. But in the future, anything that we do within the impacted zone, if we make a change, change to our code that affects that, we will then go ahead and bring it in front of you for ratification, and then it will have to be taken to the county for them to ratify it also. Uh, because ultimately, they have given the county, or they've clarified, they have full authority over that.
But they don't have to ratify it.
They don't. And if they refuse, then we can't pass it.
What did you say that was called again, the name of that?
The area of impact.
Um, before, you call it imperative or sort of the.
Area of impact.
Area of impact.
Oh, I thought you said something before that, when you were talking about the law the state passed.
Oh. Remember what I said.
You have some name for it. I was gonna write it down, but I forgot.
Yeah, it's basically what the new law has come down.
Yeah.
And we have to follow that. So just be aware of that. We're, we're looking at the code currently, and we have a lot of that in our deal. One of the challenges is, is we have allowed all of our zoning to be allowed in that impact, area, area of impact. And so we're looking at, do we allow all of those uses out in that area? And how that would affect us providing services and all of those types of things. Because that's gonna happen before they're actually annexed. And some of them might be years down the road. So we want to make sure we're not allowing stuff out there that would cause us challenges or problems down the road. But it would all be brought, brought coming to you guys before we get there. So.
Sugar City was pretty agri, it's been pretty aggressive.
Yes.
In the extending their impact area.
Yes.
Has that been discussed at all? I mean, is there, is, is it, is there some, has been, there's been many back and forth on that?
There's been a lot. They actually brought it in front of the county commissioners. And county commissioners, they requested almost nine thousand acres of impact area. Their city covers two thousand acres. And so the county's going, really, this is not feasible? Because code basically says, it's stuff you anticipate coming into your city in the next five to ten years, the old code. They rewrote it, and the new code is anything that you plan on coming in the next five years. You have to plan for it. Well, that goes into effect July one, as does the area of impact deal. Both of those happen July first, so next week, that it actually is in effect, is a lot. So yes, Sugar City has wanted to expand. They wanted to go clear to, I think, two thousand west. I don't know if any of you know where Dale Rabelton then lived. At one point, they were proposing to go to that point where the new four ways out there.
Into that road?
Yeah. And they wanted to take all of that in. The county pulled them back to Salem Road. So the Salem Highway, they've got that going in, which is still.
Goes well further west than that, further than that.
Well.
It goes out to, to our fifth west. Straight north of our fifth west.
That's their new request.
Yeah, that's what they're.
Yeah, that's their new one that they're asking. But it's just, you take, uh, three thousand, which is one that goes to the Henry's Ford State Center. You take that and you go down to a thousand, which would pretty well line up with our fifth west. There's a chunk in there of about nine hundred acres. And they actually have one parcel in that that is already annexed into Sugar City. And they're going, well, we want impact area all around our city, and this should be in ours. So they've requested again, and that meeting's coming up on the eighth of July is when that one is. So the points to ask. Okay? So I'll, I gotta step back to the podium so I can run through this. But if you have questions within this, please ask. And it's something that we'll provide copies for you. It's in a PowerPoint that you can, we'll get it so you can have access to it.
Is that eighth of July meeting a regular county commission meeting, or is it special?
It's a five thirty, so it's in the evening.
It's a finding and zoning.
Finding and zoning.
Yeah, it goes to planning and zoning first, yes.
Are we gonna be there?
City will be represented.
So are we gonna be?
Yes.
Are we gonna be to that meeting to oppose the?
City will. Well, we're not gonna oppose. We're gonna be neutral. And some of the statements that's going to be put in that is, don't expect city services from Rexburg to come into that. Uh, you need to plan for your own and how you're going to deal with that. Because for some reason, they have a belief that they can punch under the freeway at any point and connect to our sewer, sewer, not water, but our sewer. And that's not the case. There's no agreement to allow that. It would be something that if they did request, it would come in front of city council, whether you would allow that or not.
Like the thing tonight, right?
Well, that's within our impact zone. That's a little bit different animal, but it is something in our impact zone, we are bringing it to you because that's you guys' responsibility. And you guys have the right to say yes or no in that situation. So it's a different one than, than what Sugar, you're talking a complete municipality, different from ours, and wanting to connect through that. So. So when we start looking at this, this was something that I put together last year. Um, we'll probably update this here in the near future to get it a little bit more current, but there hasn't been a whole lot of change. So when you look at this, it's basically the statistics for the city of Rexburg, including our impact area. This map right here shows our, uh, comp plan designations. And then it breaks it down into each one of those different designations of how many acres and what percentage of the total that is. Um, and then we'll get into a little bit more. As you'll notice, our low residential is at seven thousand acres and fifty-five percent. That's a little misleading because the majority of that is tag, and it's in our impact area. So it's undeveloped, uh, land that we anticipate coming in in the future. And then you have the total for the whole city. This is the current map by zone. So this is different than the other one. This is in each one of them. So then you come in here and you see that transitional ag. It's thirty-four percent of the total acreage within the city. Rural residential one, eleven percent, on down through the list. I won't go through each and every one of them, but it breaks it down into it so you know what each one of those zones entails within it. And then this is the rest of them coming on through. Interesting thing, this number here, eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-five acres, and this one's twelve seventy-nine. I thought I'd screwed up on my math. Well, comp plan takes in all of the roads and everything. This one does not take roads, it's strictly parcels. So that's the difference in those two numbers. So if you see that, it's not a mathematical error. Then this breaks it down into your different, uh, uh, like single-family dwellings, multifamily. So you look into that, and in each one of those, you get to see the totals of what's going on in there. So the majority of our stuff is in our single-family dwelling, which does include single-family, twin homes, duplexes, and townhomes. So those are all included in this, in your, in your acreage that is approved for those zones. This is your multifamily, everything from medium density up into your mixed use, and then the total area, which then gives you uh, eight thousand acres total at a hundred percent when you add the two together. Now, we're gonna break it out, and I'm showing you exactly the zone that we're talking about. So this is all tag, and then it breaks it down into the different ones. Um, within city limits is a hundred and fifty-nine. Uh, impact areas, thirty-seven hundred. This is how much of that's developed. So it's actually platted and built. You've only got about two hundred and eighty-three acres of that. Um, thirty-five eighty-four is not. This is the total possible units. If you didn't change the zone, you could have that many total just within that. And then your rural residential one. So you see the areas. Again, a lot of this is in our outlying parts of the city, and a lot of it is undeveloped too. And there's, there's quite a bit of that. This out here is in our, uh, impact zone. This is impact zone. Uh, and there's a little bit down here that's in our impact zone. Again, it breaks it down into the different ones. How much of it is developed? We get a little bit more developed, but we have quite a bit that's still undeveloped. Colin, we will get you a copy of this too, okay? You came in late and I didn't get to explain. This is your rural residential two. You know, your total acreage is only two hundred and thirty-seven. It's fairly limited, all within the city limits at this point. Um, two percent of the total city. Low-density residential one. The interesting thing is, is most of this is up in the southeast corner of the city. That's the majority of it. And a lot of it's in undeveloped areas too, that have not yet been built out. Uh, three hundred and fourteen acres is all that's been built, and you still have five hundred and seventy-two acres. And you get into low-density one, you're talking four units to the acre. That's over two thousand, almost twenty-one, twenty-two hundred acres, or twenty, twenty-two hundred units that could be built in that current zoning. And we'll get into that a little deeper. LDR two, so same thing here again. Uh, it's interesting that our biggest chunk of this is going to be summer field in that whole thing. And a lot of that is undeveloped at this point.
Alan, can you go back to the LDR one?
Yes, I can.
All of that downs on the southeast corner of the city?
Mm-hmm.
Is, I'm trying to determine if that's, oh, no, that's the, that big, that big square, that is just across from the temple.
Current temple's right here.
Okay.
And so this is that ground owned by Van Der Sloot. This is the one. Yeah, this is Mill Hall, or, yeah, Mill Hollow. Hidden Valley, it's right through here.
Some of that includes some of the college property, but it doesn't?
It does not. LDR two, LDR three. This is one of our smallest. You've only got a total of thirty-nine acres, so it's very limited in what is allowed. And some of this has already been built out. You only have ten acres that is not. And I'm, I think this is like thirty-nine point nine, and this was nine point nine was the difference. I rounded them up to even them up. Um, and then your medium density. You can see where those areas are at. Again, all within, majority of them within the city. We do have one that's out in the impact area at this point. And that's potential, you can do sixteen units to the acre, or with the PUD, you can get up to twenty-two units to the acre. Medium density two, again, very limited numbers of what we have in MDR two. High-density residential one. That's color's a little difficult to see, but that's the one they show. But you can see, we're keeping this more up closer to the, the university, which is where we would like that focused in our downtown and close to the college. We want to see more of that in that way. Same with your MDR two, your HDR two. Harder to see, but you can see the majority of that is still closer to that heart of the campus scenario.
Can I go back to the last one again? Like there, so it's a, so that's right across from the temple to that one itself.
Temple's right here. And so this is the one kitty corner, Aspen Village. Here? This one. That is Mesa Falls and what's the, Eden. Mixed use, not a whole lot of acreage. And this is one that has changed a lot. We've done a lot of zone changes out in here recently, and you have more coming. So there's gonna be some differences out here in that one. So that number's actually gonna go down from where it is currently. The struggle with our mixed use is when we get that in front of people, they tend to think it's a good idea, but then trying to apply commercial and residential creates some challenges for the architects and that to design. And parking still becomes a challenge also. How do I supply enough to make sure I meet the standards that we want with the city? It's not, it's not that it's bad, it's just gotta fit in the right place. This takes all those statistics and puts them into one deal, so you can look at them. Uh, this is all acreage, then it shows you you're developed versus undeveloped. So sixty-eight percent of the city is undeveloped. Thirty-two percent is developed. So we have a lot of potential to grow without making any changes other than annexation of the impact area. That would be the only thing in doing that.
That, that does not include impact.
This does include impact. Yes. This is just your residential zones, though. That doesn't include the commercial, ident, the high, heavy industrial and that. It's in the next one.
And then that has all the impact zone too, right?
Yes. Yep.
Is there a way to know what percentage of each of those is in the impact zone versus what is in that?
Yes, I can put that slide together and have it so you know. It's broke out individually in each one of those charts I showed you. So you can look at those and go, okay, here's how much is impact, here's how much is in the city. Let me go back and show you. No, I don't. Yeah, city boundaries and impact area. So each one of these will then come in and tell you where those are at. And the one below it is how much is developed, how much is undeveloped. Okay? The residential one, this one, I included the tag in. You look at your numbers and where they're at. This says, uh, forty-eight percent of it is in tag. Well, to me, tag is a holding place for eventual rezone into a higher RR one on up through. We don't tend to want to bring tag into the city. We want that as a holder until they're ready to develop it. So I did the same thing and pulled the tag out of it, so you can look at those ratios. Now your RR one is thirty-one percent of the city. Again, a lot of that's in the impact zone, undeveloped. But you start seeing those numbers, LDR one, LDR two, they're a lot higher than when you pull them out and, and put that tag in place. Because usually, when you start showing LDR one and two and RR one, very seldom do they get rezoned. They're usually in a position where we've got it where we want it, we're going to develop. Some cases, they want to change, but it's less likely. Tag is more likely to be changed out.
But you know your percentages are slightly over a hundred percent?
Slightly. You, when I put them in here, I had to round. Now, the statistics were exact, but I rounded them in here. And so when it does that, you don't get the, you don't get that exactly spot on when you round. Okay? Now, this one, I come in and put together all of these. So here's your developed acres, number of units that you could build. So this is how many is allowed in each one of these zones per acre. And then you come down here and figure out, here's the total amount of units that could be built. And then you take that number and you times it by three point one, well, and you take those and you add them together. Sorry, that's developed acres, this is the units. You times that by the three point one, which is the average household size. There's a potential of seventy-three thousand in just this one alone. Now you add in undeveloped acres and the potential, you have the potential to hit a hundred and eleven thousand people in Rexburg without annexing or cha, well, you would have the impact area in that. But that is not changing any zone. That's using the existing zone and just filling every one of these spaces. That's if you maxed it out. So we have, yes, Brianna?
I just, well, and I think it is important to recognize that that doesn't necessarily mean that anytime in the near future, the impact zone is going to be annexed in, because I, I talked to residents and people from the county, and if they heard that, I know a lot of them would be really upset.
Mm-hmm.
They don't want to be annexed in, and so I think that's really important to remember that that's not a done deal.
Right. No, this isn't done, I'm just saying, if you looked at it right now, there would be no reason to expand our impact area. There would be no reason to rezone if we were trying to grow our population and just infill. You could hit that potential number without that. Still leaving people the freedom to say, I want to be annexed, or I don't want to be annexed. Okay? Or I want to develop, or I don't want to develop. Nothing's forcing them to. This is just showing potential.
But there will always be pressure.
Always.
To expand the impact zone.
Correct.
Because of people building in the county and then wanting to be, to have city services, like what's going on out south of town.
Correct.
There's always gonna be that pressure to expand the impact zone, even though.
Or annex. Or to be able to annex. And, and one of the things we have to keep in mind, sometimes that's because the land outside is cheaper than the land inside. So they're going, well, if I can build out here on the edge and get annexed, I can buy this ground for thirty, forty percent cheaper than stuff within the city or in, close to the city. So finances makes a big difference in that same question when you start looking at those types of deals. I guess the main reason I looked at this is to show you what potential we have. Maybe some of the areas, we have some shortcomings in number of acres available. So when you have to make that decision of, should we allow this rezone? You could maybe pull this up and go, you know what? We're really low in LDR three. Maybe this one fits. That's, that's the idea behind this, rather than assuming, well, we don't have enough LDR one, we don't have enough RR one, or we don't have enough mixed use. This gives us that opportunity, and you can balance that with the number of units. Because you take mixed use at thirty units to the acre, it doesn't take very many acres to add a lot of people in one area. So we have to be aware of how that impacts our roads, our sewers, water, all of those types of decisions also. So I don't ever expect mixed use HDR one and two to match an RR one or two in number of acres within the city. That's not a fair comparison between the two. It's just so you're aware of what's happening. Plus, looking at it and going, of the acreage we have within each one of these units, is there availability for them to still develop and build out? That's why having that undeveloped acres go, well, man, I still got five hundred and seventy-two acres of LDR one that could be developed. Or, you know, those, those types of things gives you that opportunity to look at them. Does that make sense? Okay?
Do you have statistics like that on commercial?
Um, no. Because I, I can, I want to develop that one next to be able to show that and where we're at with it. Yes, Colin?
I think that's a very important one to show, because I think we're really short on commercial.
We are.
Specifically light industrial has been my biggest concern.
Yeah, it's, it's a big one that we're very, very short on. When we took out the theater area and put it into LDR.
MDR one.
LDR one. That was a huge commercial area, just light industrial just went out.
Right. We're working on some stuff right now to see if we can make some changes to that. Um, because we recognize also, there is a shortage of light industrial. Commercial, the, the CBC tends to fluctuate because you have some areas that are not developed. But that's one that it's hard to predict where it's going to land. And all I can tell you is if half of the projects go through that we've talked with people about in the last year, you won't recognize Rexburg in five years.
You know, I, I was out in Thornton today. Every time I drive out to Thornton, I'm amazed.
The growth.
Money is going in there, right? Not to say that that's gonna happen within the city, because that's happening out there because of its proximity and ease of access.
And one other factor. No impact fees, no city taxes. No impact fees, no city taxes. There's a lot of things that they're not having to pay. And so they can do it out there a lot cheaper, and the access is easier.
But I think if, if there were, you know, the county opening up, um, the new frontage road. If we had something like that.
Yep.
No idea where it'd go.
Like what? What you mean?
An area for more light industrial.
Of access, light industrial area where some of these warehouses can come in and have good access, they have good amenities. I think there'd be a lot of interest there because we're seeing that within the county.
Yep.
Whether they'll come in the city, I don't know.
And you see that same theme down at, at County Line Road, south of Rigby End and just right there north.
Yeah, I mean, it's exactly what you said. I, I don't know where we'd put it in the city and we'd, we'd have to do a lot of looking, but to have the same access, cheaper ground, you know, all those things, the reason they're going there. I'm not sure that's doable in the city.
Well, and, and if they are servicing the city of Rexburg, right?
If they were.
If they are servicing the city of Rexburg, it might make sense for them to be here. If they're going up and down the highway, they're gonna land camp, right? But what I, my point is, is that we're, we're giving our light industrial or some of these commercial areas away to residential, which is fine, right? We're approving, one needs to be approved. But it's been a big concern of mine that we are, we're diminishing opportunities for stuff like that to come into the city.
Well, you have to think about it a couple of ways, though. Are we really hurting ourselves that way? I mean, what kind of return do we get as a city on light industrial versus, you know, a housing project? I think our return is a lot better tax revenue wise off of a housing project than it is off of a little group of shops. You know, it's way higher. So, you know, maybe that's where we want the light industrial is down there. Where they've got easy access and it's good for them, good for business and, and, uh, I mean, that, that's, the city really is more of a place where people are aggregated, where people live and they can access the services like the grocery stores, pharmacies and things like that. They don't particularly care that much if they can access Cedar Point Trucking. Who cares?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of the distributors that service the city of Rexburg, right?
They don't wanna be in the city. I mean, they, they, it, it might be handy for them to be able to load up their Frito Lay truck, you know, over there by where my shop where I used to live. But to drive three miles this way and be able to unload to the stores, I don't think it's too big of a deal for them when they get, when they've got cheaper land, cheaper, you know, all that stuff, I think. I don't know, it's just that, that, just kinda trying to think through the business models and revenues and things like that and, you know, what do we want the city to be versus the outskirts of the city, I guess.
The, the challenge is gonna come with places like Thornton. If they get to that situation where health department says, no more sewer systems. Will no longer allow you to be on when you're gonna have to go to a managed system. And then all of a sudden, it's gonna be cheaper for them to come into the city. I think we take into account, where do we try to put light industrial? Cause there's, there's definitely places we can do that are unobtrusive to residents, you know, residential housing. And still would provide that. But there is a balance, a fine line between, is it better for them to be outside or in? I don't know.
One, one of the things actually that to maybe, and we've talked about this before, it's nothing new, but, uh, you know, when, when the airport gets moved, that's a pretty good little light industrial park right there with a lot of buildings already there that can be converted or torn down and new ones built, but that's it. And, and there you've got easy access to the freeway, so, so that's one area that holds some pretty good promise, I think.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a ways before we get there, but.
Okay, we gotta get to this quick. I gotta give Spencer his fair share. I do have your commercial. This breaks it down. There's all of your commercial, your community business center, where it's located. Regional Business Center, we only have the two spots in the whole city. Fujimoto Property and Walmart. Light Industrial, that's the current, where it's at. So there are spots currently designated for it. And some of these look like a good spot to have that. This is not great access for stores and stuff like that. So they may stay that way, they may move. We had Cedar Point out there, we had Johnson Precast. They have both moved to Thornton. So they had access here, but decided to go there. Uh, mainly because they could build their buildings, get what they needed down there with less cost. Yeah?
What's the practical difference between Regional Business Center and Commercial Business Center?
Regional, we're looking at a larger block of land specifically for big boxes. And so you're just, you're trying to just.
Did someone put that same thing in CBC?
Um, I don't think we would fight them, but what we're trying to do is keep truck traffic out of our downtown. You're trying to get them close to a interchange, things like that, so access is easier for those supplying it and for regional people coming in. You're designing something that you're not just getting the people from Rexburg. You're drawing people from Ashton, from Island Park and from Driggs and out to Salmon. They're all coming to our Walmart. And so you're trying to do that. It's more of a regional store where you look at some of the others we have, it's, it's more focused towards city of Rexburg or Madison County. And it usually is a larger tract of land when you do that.
Do you know what is typical, um, what percentage of land?
I don't have those stats. It's so different depending on what's going on within it. Uh, you got a lot of cities that are heavy industrial and then they have a lot of retail to go with that. You have others that are more of a bedroom community. We're kinda in between the two. Uh, with the col, we're basically a college town. Our focus is college. And we're just slowly shifting to that commercial element and the things that are gonna come in here that may pull a little bit of that, uh, towards that, so. Public facilities, that's just all our, our stuff. Golf courses, school districts is the majority of that. Hospital, medical. And then the university district, which they have a lot of acres. They still have a lot too to develop. They're all, just a little over halfway. Open space, this is stuff we're looking at around our rivers. Mainly areas that aren't gonna be developed, aren't gonna be public facilities, but we wanna protect them. We wanna keep them, uh, safe and available. Riverwalks, stuff like that. This is your form base downtown, and it just breaks into three different codes. Four, four different. Uh, again, land use statistics by zones. This pulls in all of it. So you now have all of your commercial and everything, breaking it down into the different statistics. And this is what I wanted to show you. This is our growth since two thousand and fifteen. Annexations with rezones, four hundred and thirteen acres. And then rezones without annexation, three hundred and twenty-three. For a total of seven hundred and thirty-six annexations and rezones. And this is what they were, this is basically, they came in and this is the zones they came into. Or that they were changed to. This is year by year, you can see which one, and this one's too busy to look at and take your time out. So, but you can look at this and it shows you which zones they were done in and in what year. This is, um, dollar amount value that has come in permit wise. This is what our permits showed that each one of them was worth in the different years. Single family residences, about eighty-four million dollars worth of new residences in that timeframe. Town homes, for almost forty-two, forty-one and a half. Multi-family, two hundred and seven million. So it's definitely, a lot of money's been spent on multifamily. And then commercial, at a hundred and eight. And so your total valuations in each one of those areas. Again, put them together, but your what? Almost five hundred, five fifty? Five hundred and sixty million dollars worth that's come in since two thousand seventeen. And then this just shows the different valuations and, and how they fluctuated and what our peak years were. So single families had a real jump in there. And then your total number of permits in each one of those areas. And at this, again, you gotta look at, they may not be as many permits, but there's a lot more cash involved with this one individually than there are these individually. And then that shows when those permits, twenty-one was a very peak year for single family residences for value, or for permits. And again, totals. That's it. Any more questions?
It's a lot of information.
It's a lot of information, it is.
Good data to have, though.
So Colin, are the, are the levy rates different? Commercial versus residential?
Well, I know the residential has the homeowner's exemption. Um, that gives them an advantage that way. I don't think there's any difference.
I think the levy rate's the same, isn't it?
I think they're most, yeah, I think it's pretty much the same. They just get that exemption as a homeowner where the businesses do not.
It's based on land value. Yeah. The levy rate's the same, it's just.
Yeah. It's straight across the board with.
Total citywide. Who brings in the most?
Yeah, that's. That would take a, a pretty solid program. Yeah. So, okay, I'm gonna turn the rest of the time over to Spencer and let him go through this.
There's a property tax training course in Boise on the twenty-third of July, if anybody wants to look through it. I'm sure it's riveting. I'm sure it teaches you all about how property taxes work. Or don't work. Other assess and all that.
Quickly, rather than go through a generic boilerplate, uh, training that we'll typically do. Um, I went to, uh, it was in March, I went to a, a training in Boise and there was a full two hours presented on this case. This is a case, uh, obviously deals with planning and zoning. It's one of those cases that as an attorney, it drives you crazy because as you read some of the things that the city of Boise did, in my mind, I'll think, how, I don't know if I would've done anything different, or how do we do things differently? But those are the best cases to have because essentially it promotes change that is necessary and needed to avoid unnecessary litigation and then just heartburn moving forward. So as you can see, the title of this case, Northwest Neighborhood Association, all the words that don't matter versus the city of Boise. It was a major development with all sorts of different subcategories and things being, uh, brought forth. Uh, it was a very substantial development that was contentious and as the Supreme Court talks about, uh, offered her, resulted in many meetings going into late hours of the night. So we've all been in meetings like that. We all know the type of circumstances that typically uh, would create these types of situations. The biggest issue with this case and the biggest holding that I would make you guys aware about is the procedural defect or the issue with this case that had it thrown out and tossed back to the city of Boise was the well reasoned statement. The finding of facts were found to not be sufficient and to not meet statutory muster. So quickly, um, the reason I bring this up too is it impacts both Planning and Zoning Commission and then also City Council. And then, so quickly, let's review if the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, makes a recommendation and then it is approved ultimately by City Council, what is then the remedy in which an aggrieved party can challenge that ruling? They can have judicial review in which reviewing court, uh, they does, it says the reviewing court does not substitute judgment for that of the governing board. Uh, under the LUPA, it should be affirmed and the court's governing board's finding emphasis and conclusions where they, this is, so I've shown you this, this A through C, or excuse me, through E. In violation of constitutional or statutory provisions, in excess of the statutory authority of the agency uh, made upon unlawful procedure, not supported by substantial evidence on the record as a whole or arbitrary capricious, uh, or an abuse of discretion. Okay? Big words, a lot of things that, uh, some of those things, our wonderful city staff already takes care of those things from a procedural and giving notice standpoint. This boils down to though, again, after all the meetings and the hearings, essentially when a decision was made, the findings of facts were found to be deficient. I looked at those finding of facts, uh, rather than pull them up and have you read the whole thing, they're about two pages, a page and a half, two pages. Very similar to what I've seen done throughout the entire state. And so then you have to, we have to begin to question, well, what did they do wrong or what did the court say they did wrong in making this decision? And what can we do to make sure that we don't make the same mistake? So how does this apply to us? Every time the Planning and Zoning Commission or the, uh, City Council makes a determination in which findings of fact are, uh, required, it impacts everything we do. And so if you think about that, a page and a half of findings of fact to be found deficient, I don't think it was for a lack of effort there or a lack of their typical protocol. But the court has specifically broke down the statute that guides us on what types of things we need to have on our, in our decision making that the record, uh, can then reflect. Okay, so I'll go to page seven of this finding. Okay? And then, can you guys see this, okay? I would like you to have it in front of you too. I'm gonna go back one more. The local land right here, do you see where I'm highlighting? Okay? Okay, the local land use planning act also requires a governing authority to issue a written reasoned statement which accompanies its decision to explain why the land use application was approved or denied. Uh, the approval or denial of any application required or authorized pursuant to this chapter shall be in writing and accompanied by a reasoned statement that explains the criteria and standards, uh, considered relevant. Okay, so this to me, as I'm highlighting this right now, so what then would we have to find or have included in our well reasoned statement? So when we have a well written statement that is written, I'm gonna ask, uh, Katie and, uh, Ms. Lovejoy, where, where do you, Deb, I know you're next, Deb, I'm just trying to be proper. I'm a, you know, where do you get that information from?
Minutes.
From the record, from the minutes. And so anything that is discussed or not discussed is either included or not included within those minutes. Correct? Okay, and so if I look at this and if they're directly citing the law of the things that should be in every one of our well reasoned decisions, criteria and standards considered relevant states the relevant contested facts relied upon and explains the rationale for the decision based on the applicable provision of the comprehensive plan, the relevant ordinance and statutory provisions. I initially took issue with that because I think then it asks lay individuals or individuals who are volunteering on something to apply a a legal standard to their decision making, but then when you think about it, I mean, that's why we have an attorney present. but then when you think about it, I mean, that's why we have an attorney present. That's why we are here to be able to ask questions, to say, hey, how does this statute apply to this given scenario? Now, we have some applications where contested facts, there just aren't many of them, they're kind of uncontested. We have the others like this case where they are hotly contested and debated. We have so many scenarios, and I think everybody can think of this example, of when people bring in issues that aren't relevant to either the Planning and Zoning Commission or to City Council. And so, you know, how do you explain those things? I think again, and we often see this, it is making it known for the record that this isn't applicable to what we're doing. For instance, if there's, we've had a recent run of, people will come in and say, well, this violates the homeowners association. And we quickly say, hey, that doesn't have relevance in what we're doing here. That is an agreement or a contract between private parties that are, that's not relevant to our decision-making today. So my main takeaway is I think we're doing a lot of these things in the cases that where they're necessary. I would be more comfortable if we can get a system in place in which we are kind of checking boxes in our minds in which, okay, I think that we're all on the same page here or from the discussion that we've had, I think we're all coming to the same conclusion or there's a couple of us who are dissenting here. Now that we're going into making a finding, are making our finding as a fact, are we going through that checklist in our minds? You know, have I mentioned this, have I considered and/or mentioned the specific provisions of the statute or of the ordinance or of this specific contested fact where it's kind of bringing up again, and I know the residents of Rexburg have issue with this, again, that isn't relevant to our inquiry, but, or this is relevant, but I'm convinced by the applicant's statement or by city and staff that calms those concerns down for me. It's just kind of a methodical way of looking at a well-reasoned statement. Do you have questions, sir?
Yeah, so my question involving this, is this something that needs to be discussed or is this something that needs to be stated when a motion is made, which is suggested?
So, I think that, does it have to, so essentially, a motion would be made based on the discussion. That doesn't mean that in your own motion, I mean, it's all a part of the minutes. And so to say that, hey, I'm gonna make a motion based on something else that, you know, I think is relevant, although I didn't bring it up earlier, I mean, it's still relevant because it's still on record and it's still a part of your decision-making. Does that make sense? Where it doesn't necessarily, again, I don't think that you have to, within the discussion, have a drawn-out legal discussion on the appropriate, on the meaning and statutory interpretation of the statute. But during that public hearing, you can ask council, you can ask city staff, are there any statutory provisions or ordinance things that you guys are worried about or any issues that you see applicable to law moving forward? Questions that we don't necessarily ask all the time, I would be more comfortable now just having those baseline questions asked to show, hey, I don't see anything within the law or I haven't been advised that there's any issues, legal issues moving forward, and then continue with the main reasoning within that finding. Alan, am I going off track here or do you like that?
No, I think you're heading pretty close. When I think of what Brian's asking here though, I'm looking at, you're gonna ask questions within your discussion or within what's presented, but mainly as the commission or the city council does their discussion. How does this fit? Does it fit our rules? Does it fit where we want it to go? That's something you discuss in there and that should help you formulate your motion where you bring in some of those highlights. I believe it meets what our requirements are in the comprehensive plan, we're following the statutes that allows this type of thing to do. You don't have to quote which part, but at least coming in and referring to those types of things in your deal, it meets the plan, it meets this, the ordinance is, thus we believe it shouldn't distort it, or here's why we're denying it.
Spencer, it seems like, it seems like there's a lot of these things that we're getting anyway from staff, on staff review and recommendations, right? We see some of this stuff already, right? I mean, we've talked before about, we're not a body that makes a decision on engineering, but the engineer gives us a report that says, hey, this meets our standards. So how does that apply when we're making those motions?
Well, I think, again, when you're making those motions, if there is a contested, let's just say like traffic is being contested, okay? Rather than have to go through the entire, if Alan says, well, there's gonna be a traffic study done, rather than just then making a conclusion that, or just saying like, you know, when traffic doesn't apply to us, or making the legal conclusion, I guess, that traffic isn't an issue. It's more of, in talking with staff, it appears that traffic, any traffic concerns have been addressed by them and will be continued to be monitored and addressed. So they take, and it's a fine line and a distinction they make, and it's one of the reasons that I struggled with this opinion at first, is, so even right here, it says, "These cases demonstrate that the reasoned statement must plainly state the resolution of factual disputes, identify the evidence supporting that factual determination and explain the basis for legal conclusions, including identification of the pertinent laws and/or regulations upon the legal conclusions rest." So, back to what, and the reason I had this interaction with Deb and Katie is, they make these well-written statements, these reasoned statements based on the record, not just on the motion that you're making. Do you understand that? And so I think that it requires staff and legal to maybe be more involved in these types of scenarios where we think a statute, or if somebody specifically on the record challenged, challenges a legal statute, because then they can still pull, correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, from legal statements, or does it directly have to come from them? Does they have to incorporate it in their motion?
Well, I think if they're referencing, that can be referenced as well, you know, we can include it as stated.
I'm just saying, yeah. I'm saying that, so when they're making their motion, they don't have to organically go through legal issues. If it's discussed previously between them and legal within the meeting, they can, within that well-reasoned statement, say, as discussed with legal, any challenge to the statutory authority or issues.
What I do with that, if legal references a statute, then that should be included. What would be helpful in that statement is, is just like a brief synopsis of what it is and who it references. That would clarify any from the applicant's position as well.
Really quickly, and we'll go through this some more, and I may just ultimately put together, oh, please.
Oh, I just, I guess I'm a little confused because it sounds like you're saying that if city staff sign off, that we have no way, like we just have to rubber stamp it. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not. I don't know where you got that.
Okay.
If they rubber stamped it, no, I think you can challenge anybody who can, again, city staff isn't voting, you're voting.
But, but, but I guess what I'm getting from what you're saying is that we're gonna cause the city to get sued if we say no.
Or, or here's my opinion, I kind of feel the same way, but I legitimately feel like I legitimately have to say, it doesn't meet this ordinance or it doesn't meet X, Y, Z in our book for me to deny it. Is that, it's not enough to just to say, well, I just don't think it fits.
And I think that's kind of what it's pointing you towards is, you need to deny it based on some good reasoning, not just because you don't like it, because that's when you get sued.
They go through specific statements in those, for instance, the one case in Jerome said, the city councilman said, I just don't think this is the right time for this application. Not great. Because again, is it, because, hey, that could be incorporated in the overall, maybe he meant something like, it's not the right time because we don't have the infrastructure to support. Or not the right time because the zoning doesn't match what they're trying to do. But because he just made a general statement like that, they have to take that legal conclusion that it was just a statement. So as to city staff, again, I think we need to, if you disagree with city staff on some of those things, I think they need to be flushed out on the record sometimes. I think I've even told Planning and Zoning Commission that if you disagree with something, you say, hey, notwithstanding what city staff has presented to me, I believe after hearing all the relevant facts and information, that I still have concerns with this and still disagree with this. And so again, it's not in any way trying to rubber stamp what city staff is saying, it's just if you're, whether you're, both ways, whether you're approving an application, because you have to remember, it can be, it can be adversarial on both sides. If you approve something for a, for developer, the aggrieved party could be the landowners. If you deny one, well, the aggrieved party then is the developers. And so on both sides, either in acceptance or denial of applications, we just have to flush it out a little bit better. I think what I'm gonna do is, in the next, we'll create a legal memo or a better synopsis of what we think this case would now make us consider and put in moving forward. There's just two quick things before we wrap up that I wanted just to touch on. So the other thing I think is, it would be appropriate in some of these things to take good notes in these types of situations, but remember, in any public forum or a public meeting, if you rely on those notes then, they have to be turned over to Deb to be made a part of the record. If it's just throwaway notes where it's just you're jotting down someone's initial or name, but if you have notes that are substantial and that you're relying on within making your motion, they should be a part of the record. Am I off-base there? Okay. And finally, just one thing very quickly, there was also a provision of this process, this prolonged process in which the court took issue with city council denying a recommendation of planning and zoning without adequately addressing why they denied it. So it says, "The dissenters at the court at least should hold the required, or require the county to explain why it departed from the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of the project. Despite Planning and Zoning's extensive fact-finding and comprehensive proposed permit, the board offered no explanation for its reversal and summarily decided there was nothing the applicant could do to obtain a permit." So again, that happens all the time, it's gonna happen in any municipality where city council disagrees with something that has been recommended by Planning and Zoning. If there is that disagreement, I just think it needs to be flushed out on the record of, hey, despite these, Planning and Zoning moving this forward for approval based on this, 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 and this, I disagree, we disagree with that. And then, again, then it turns into a procedural discussion of if it moves back to hold another public hearing. Okay, that's all the time we have. I appreciate you guys, and like I said, we'll circle back with any other relevant discussion here, and Steve and I are obviously, well, I'm not gonna be presumptuous, I'm happy to discuss any questions with you about the case. I'm not sure if Steve is, but, maybe it depends on the day, so.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We appreciate you taking time out of your schedule. We can do that. You can stay if you want.
Go ahead, we missed it.
Is it worth it?
It's a bit of a report to go through, isn't it? All right, let's see, whose turn is it for the prayer and pledge? Oh, I forgot to grab a pen. We used to keep one up here, just for me. Yeah? Oh, great, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Keep one in here.
I usually have one right here, but somebody swiped it. I usually have three in here, but for some reason, there's. Let's see, today is June 19th, right? No, well, it's a week later, June 26th.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna sit in the back then.
Yeah, so, let's see, council member Chambers, will you offer the opening prayer?
Sure.
And I will lead us in the pledge. We'll kind of do a switch or change-o here. This is our schedule up when people aren't here. This is my schedule up. All right, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. It's 6:36, sorry, we're a little bit late getting started. We just finished up with a Planning and Zoning and a joint city council training meeting, trying to learn more about how to better do our duties here, the city of Rexburg. So, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, the city council meeting for June the 26th of 2024, that would be the Rexburg City Council meeting, I stand to be scared confused. All right, we'd like to start off with a, with a prayer, an opening prayer and a pledge to the flag, and I've asked council member Chambers to offer an opening prayer, after which I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be gathered here this evening in this city council meeting, grateful for the opportunity we have been given to meet and to deliberate as a community. We pray as we contemplate and consider the issues on this agenda tonight that we will be blessed with thy Spirit and thy guidance and the spirit of cooperation. We give thanks to thee for thy son, our Savior. We pray that we may emulate the characteristics that he portrayed during his life. We give thanks, Father, for those who serve our community, both in the armed forces and in emergency services. We pray that thy Spirit will bless and protect them. We give thanks for this election year and pray that we may feel inspired in our choices and in our right to vote. We thank thee, Father, for our blessings and as thy continued care of this community. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you. All right, would you please stand and follow me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Okay, we will go ahead and move on with our. All right, thank you very much. Okay, we will go ahead and move on with our agenda tonight. And the first thing would be the roll call of the council members. Arianna, please.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Colin Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Eric Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Reeser.
Here.
Councilmember, yeah, is online, right?
He's sat here.
Okay.
Council President Walker.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have a full quorum with Councilmember Reeser online, so that's great. Okay, at this time, item number four on the agenda is to welcome new employees to our city employment. And we have a new employee in our wastewater department, Ty Beeler. Is that you, Ty?
Yes.
Okay, good. I thought so. We'd like to ask you, if you wouldn't mind, to come up to the podium and just tell us a little bit about yourself and whatever you'd like us to know.
Good evening. So, one correction, though. The last name is Beeler.
Beeler, oh, sorry. Okay, I wondered about that when I said it.
Dropped the Y. The name completely makes sense.
Yeah, that's, that does make sense, okay.
Some ancestor coming over from Switzerland apparently had a misspelling of the name or mispronunciation with one of the border guards.
Took an extra Y in there, huh?
Pretty much.
Okay, good.
So, again, my name is Ty Beeler. I was born and raised in Idaho, a very tiny town, two hours northwest of here, called Leder. Born and raised into a farming family. I'm the fourth generation to work on that ranch. I've been married to my wife for going on six years since November. And we have two children and are going to be celebrating our third this week.
Oh, wow.
So, it's, it's an eventful week for us.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I went to school at BYU Idaho and graduated about four years ago with a degree in professional studies, emphasis on plant and animal science, and a background in accounting. Are there any other questions or things that you'd like to know about me specifically?
Any questions from anyone? No, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And we'd like to welcome you to our Rexburg family.
Oh, thank you.
Give you a hand. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Okay, we'd like to move on this moment. We have item number five on our agenda is public comment time. That's for any items that are not on the agenda. And if anyone would like to speak, we ask you to limit it to three minutes and come up to the podium and state your name and address. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Crisp.
Just one second.
Thank you. So, my name is Elizabeth Crisp, and my address is 576 Chad Drive. So, I actually am here just asking some questions about the pickleball courts. I know that there have been some rumblings. I actually haven't heard myself anything, and I'm not, I don't know if I'm just missing things, which I think might be the case. But, so I did have some questions about them. And I had tried to look online. I couldn't find anything in your meeting minutes. I saw something on the agenda from March 20th, but then I didn't see anything in the minutes. So, I don't know if these questions have already been answered. I was able to get hold of one of your council members who did answer some questions for me. And he let me know that there were some in the works with a budget about $300,000. And so, I, then I saw that there had been a survey in February in the Life in Rexburg Facebook page. And so, some of my questions were if that was the only place that the survey was taken, if I had just missed something, how were taxpayers surveyed? Yeah, go ahead.
Can I maybe, maybe we can save you some time here. Are you thinking about new pickleball courts that were proposed for Nature Park?
Specifically, yes.
Okay, though, yeah, that's not going to happen. The, the new ones that we're proposing are actually over by the baseball quad.
So, are they, but they are still within that $300,000 budget, correct?
We don't know that yet. We're waiting for bids to come in.
So, my questions then, with respect to how close they are to residencies, then would be moot. Those ones would not be relevant.
Yeah, they'll be over there.
But then the question about things like the, how taxpayers were surveyed and how taxpayers were informed of the decision and how the decision was actually made. We have had many, many years of people asking for a fitness center. We've had bonds not passed through voting. So, my question is then, for something like this, which is such a big thing, that I know that there are people who would much rather have that money spent elsewhere, such as perhaps more playgrounds, or perhaps even toward a smaller something like the fitness center. So, how was the decision made then to go just towards spending a budget that did not have to have a bond passed instead of voting for taxpayers who will actually be putting forth the $300,000, which I assume it's coming from our tax base?
Yeah, it's from general fund money, yeah.
So, so then how was the decision made?
Decision was made, did you, do you want to address that?
Oh, you, you can. I was just going to say, we, so, since I've been on the council for the last four and a half years, we've taken surveys in different ways. I can think of a few that city staff has run for us. And so, a lot of residents said that they had an interest in them. And then, we have our budget meetings every May. And so, we made it really clear in those meetings that those pickleball courts were part of the budget.
In, in the budget meeting in May?
Yeah, last May. We have, we have budget meetings. I don't, that's how we communicate to the public.
So, how were the surveys done then?
The surveys were done online. There were actually some that were, like, they put QR codes around the city and had people use a QR code to, to look online. So, but our, but our budgets are out there in the open. We have budget meetings and we talked about it in the budget meeting.
So, I guess I'm just, I guess my question then is, is as a taxpayer, I, I had no idea that this was going on, which just seems kind of odd to me. And so...
Well, it's, it's, it's been, I mean, we've tried to put it out there online on Engage Rexburg. We, it's frustrating to try to get information out because there's so many avenues right now. You know, people say things on Facebook and that, you know, all of these different social media, and then they disappear within a day. But we try to get it out there. And we've sent out surveys to, like Councilmember Johnson said, to survey people on what they, they want or would like, or, you know, like to see people see us spend money on. And, and so, we, we try to get that information out the best we can. Our, our budget meetings are open to the public. In fact, when we, we had our budget review last meeting, wasn't it? Or was it the one before? And, and it's, it's in this meeting and it's open. And so, so, you know, we, we can't really send like mailers out to every citizen and inform them of every decision we're making, because then we'd be spending more money on mailers than we do on playground equipment, you know? So, we try to just put it out on social media and, you know, the newspaper and everything we can to try to get it out to people. But short of knocking on everybody's door and telling them what we're doing, that, that's really about the only thing we can do. So...
Okay, all right. Then, I guess my last question then is for something that large, then. So, that's not something that usually is a bond, something?
No, not if we can save up money. We prefer not to do bonds if we can save up money and pay for it, because we don't want to pay a lot of interest.
So then, something like that would just be a survey, then?
Well, not just surveys, but, you know, we, I mean, we try to, you know, council members try to talk to people they know and surveys. And, I mean, we try to do everything we can think of to get feedback, but, yeah.
Apparently, I just missed it all.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Another thing you could do is sign up to get the agendas and get the information.
I do, I do actually get them and...
And that should be on there every time we're going to discuss anything like that?
Yeah, and for some reason, that was one that I missed. But like I said, I looked back at the meeting minutes, and I did, there was nothing, even though it was on the agenda, there was nothing that I could see.
And actually, we have a new, a new thing. We have, in connection with our website, we have a new app that you can sign up for. It's going to be Rexburg City App that will get out information too. So, and you can sign up to have a push notification pushed to you so that there's information coming.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Hey, is there anyone else who would like to make any public comments? Okay, seeing no others, we will move on to item number six, which is our committee reports. So, let's just start down here with Councilmember Erickson. Is there anything from your committees that you would like to report on?
The only thing I have to report on the week, which way? That way?
This one, sorry.
Go ahead.
Colin Erickson, Councilmember Colin Erickson.
I didn't look down, see which way is pointing. I didn't.
Sorry.
This way or that way?
That way.
Okay.
That way.
The only thing I have to report is that, kind of excited that we've, we've been working hard to get the GIS to start mapping our golf course water system. And, and that's going, that's a big thing to get done. And, and they're doing it now. And also to report that the golf courses are very, very busy and the revenue's coming in and what they're doing. It's been, that's a facility that's been very well-used. And it's been good to have a lot of people out there using them. That's the only thing I have to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Johnson.
I just had a question. So, for beautification, you know, we sometimes organize park cleanups and things like that. And I know you saw, Mayor, the email about the dog park and the bark that they want spread over there and things like that. And I just didn't know, like, is that something we could organize volunteers to help with?
We probably could. In fact, that was one of the things that, that I was thinking too, is that I know the parks have got it on their list, because, because I've talked to them about it, clear since last year, when I saw all the mud out there. And it's on their list, but we might be able to speed it up a little bit if, if we had a group that would be willing to help spread it.
So, do you, should I talk to the people that are interested in it and get back to you, maybe, or?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. And I'll talk to Greg meanwhile and say, ask him, you know, when, because we could probably get a load of bark any, about any time, really, if we had a group of people that could do it, yeah.
Okay. I just feel like we could do more for that with beautification, you know?
Yeah.
I think people are always looking for service projects.
Mm-hmm.
And then, that trail, I got an email about the trail by the junior high, and they said that there were weeds coming up through it. I, I didn't have time to go over there and look yet. Have you seen that?
You know what? Actually, I, I have not been over there, but I know what they're talking about. I was over there last year and we, there were some, and I think we got them sprayed last year, but I don't know that they've gotten it done this year.
Okay.
There's also a bunch of weeds I noticed out there in that strip along.
12 plus? Oh, no. Which one were you going to say?
Oh, what's this, what's the street? Pioneer Road, Pioneer Road. We've got that rock strip that they're getting bad there too. So, so I will talk to our, we always have to try to figure out if our parks people have time to do it or our streets people have time to do it. And usually neither one, but that we just have to figure out who can get it done. So, anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
So, weed control on paths and strips. Okay, Councilmember Walker.
The ADA Oversight Board met last night for the first time and got organized. They got a chairman and a vice chairman. And their next meeting is, is, July 9th, is that right? And so, they're just getting organized and getting everything, some discussion going on, some things that maybe they can, we can improve on ADA-wise, so.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Six members show up, and that's all six that were asked to serve.
Oh, good. That's awesome. Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Chambers.
The Urban Renewal Agency met today. We reviewed the budget for each of the districts and have approved those. We'll go to a public hearing. I think it was in July, Matt. And will those be published or available to the public?
Yeah, they'll be published in the newspaper two times prior.
Okay.
For that public hearing. And it's the same, I think it's at 12:30, but it's the same day we're doing the city one as well, the 17th.
And the budgets look good, good projects moving forward. We anticipate seeing more detailed plans of the downtown development in August. So, I'll report more then. I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Eric Erickson.
I must admit that I've been out of town more than I've been in town the last three days. So, the only thing I have really to report is the fact that the Parks and Rec continues to work on the new river park. They're still in phases of, of planning, but there, but there'll be some, I think they'll be able to turn some dirt yet this summer. And, and that's about all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Yes, oh, yeah. Well, I was just going to say, yes, speaking of Parks and Rec, I, I put this together, and I was going to say that's all Mayor's business, but since you brought it up, I thought I would just, this is a, just an objectives of the things that I thought would be good for the Parks, Parks, Rec, and Trails Committee. And what I would ask you to do is just read through it. And if you've got any other things you'd like to add to it, or if you disagree, if you don't think any of those things should be on there, just visit with me and, and we'll try to get that, you know, we want to try to get that organized. So, but I think, I felt like we needed to have some objectives for the committee before we just start having meetings. So, so anyway, if you would do that, that'd be great. Was that kind of what you were going to say?
I was wondering, I, I really like these, though. I think that, that's exactly what I would say, too. Is it ready to go out to bid yet, the new park?
Yeah, I don't think it's quite ready yet. Aren't we still waiting for a couple things?
Yeah, there's a couple items. One is IDWR and Corps of Engineers for the permit, the stream bank alteration permit.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, when you talk, you got to push that button and put that in front of you.
Yes.
There you go. Waiting for IDWR and what?
And the Corps of Engineers for the stream bank alteration permit.
Right, okay.
So, we got to have that. And then I think they're tying up a queue of events.
Okay. All right. Right, okay. Oh, Councilmember Reeser, have you got any reports for, on anything?
Well, if you, can you hear me okay?
Uh, just barely.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I wish I had something to report. I was going to be flying back to Rexburg and make it to go to the air show for the Legacy Flight Museum. And our flights were canceled from Europe, so I had to spend another night in Munich.
Oh.
So, maybe somebody else could tell me how the air show went there a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. I was actually out of town too, to that convention up in Coeur d'Alene. But did any of you attend the air show? Would like to report on it?
I was out of town too.
Oh, yeah?
It went well.
It went well, yeah. Was it a big crowd?
I wash it from the backyard, so I don't know.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I know there was a big crowd. Deb.
Very big crowd. Deborah can report, I guess. Did you have anything, Colin?
I just had several citizens talk to me about it, and they thought, they was thrilled. They loved it. And they even liked, you know, how we set up the parking. Could have been maybe a little bit better organized, like a ski hill, maybe put strings down to park them. Because when it started parking, it was a little bit jumbled over there, but they really liked the air show. They enjoyed it. They loved being there, so.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate you helping me with my report.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Deborah, what did you say?
I said by 2:30, the place was deserted. There wasn't hardly any traffic, even at the...
Bringing a lot of people in, but I don't know if they stick around much, so. Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Let's move on to item number seven, which is our staff reports. And we'll start with our IT report with our IT Director, Mr. Todd Smith.
I don't know if we need to bring that up. Yeah, I don't care. So, evening. We're talking tonight about building access control and surveillance systems, or building locks, key card, that type of stuff, and the surveillance cameras that we've got around town. It's kind of a aging access control system. We need to replace it or upgrade it or do something with it. We've got a lot of cameras that are very old. And we're missing like a mobile app. We're missing the integration between the two systems, all sorts of things like that. So, we put this RFP out in February, I think it was. And we received 20 responses from 18 different vendors. So, we had a couple of vendors that actually provided two different solutions. And, do you want me to wait? Are we okay?
It's up to you.
We're going to be done.
Yeah, well, I've got to get in here.
So, anyway, we received 20 different responses from those, 18 different vendors. And the prices varied, I mean, they were all over the board. I think the least expensive one was $158,000, and the most expensive one was like $630,000. So, they were like all over the place. So, what we did is we, we took the, I think there were nine vendors, maybe eight vendors that all bid a Vigilon Solutions, which is the surveillance system that we already use. So, we figured it might be the easiest to implement. So, we took those eight vendors that bid or quoted a Vigilon stuff, and we interviewed them over the phone. And then we narrowed that pool down to four that we brought in and did a... And then we narrowed that pool down to four that we brought in and did an onsite presentation with. They presented to us. And then we took two of those and brought them back onsite to do a more thorough walkthrough and a more detailed bid or quote or whatever. So we narrowed it down to these two. It's M2 Automation out of Boise and Agnetics. I think they're based in Post Falls, Idaho, so both Idaho companies. We've had a lot of conversations with them, we've had a lot of, well, many visits with their, some of their references and different things like that. We want, well, if Deborah can zoom in on this at all, I know she's trying desperately. Does it show up at the bottom?
Yeah, there it is.
So, these are not last and final numbers, but these are really close to where the last and finals are going to end up. There's still a few things that we need to add into these, but you can see that M2 on the surveillance side, it's about 297,000. For their access control, it's about 103. We got some updated numbers on these today, actually, so they're just about 6,000 higher total over those. They've got some premium support, so this is one place where M2 really shines. They have premium support levels for surveillance and another support level for access control, about $40,000 a year. And that total at the bottom includes that maintenance for the first year that we would have to pay. But the cool thing about M2 is that if we stick with that annual premium support for 10 years, they will completely replace everything that hasn't already been replaced or failed, everything that's part of this project. So that's kind of a cool thing. Agnetics.
They'll all be new again.
Agnetics, they are a fantastic company. I have said over and over and over, I wish we'd have found them years ago. They're kind of a general purpose IT value-added reseller, so they consult with a lot of different services. We're actually talking to them about our phone system right now, too. But we just felt like, overall, I mean, the price is higher, obviously, but, you know, if we push that out 10 years or whatever, they come out pretty close to about the same, but we still really feel, based on the qualifications and everything, that M2 would be the one that we'd like to go with. So what we're looking for from you is approval to move forward into the next phase, to, you know, enter into a contract, sign a contract with them, bring a contract back to you, I guess, for approval with M2.
One thing, Todd, just if we can maybe elaborate a little bit more.
Absolutely.
The surveillance, of course, that's a big number, but I think we're talking, because the question was asked today earlier about more surveillance cameras at places like the nature park, where we're getting a fair amount of vandalism on our playground equipment, things like that. And that's part of this plan, right, is to put surveillance cameras in some of these highly vandalistic areas and stuff.
Right, so places like the skate park, for example, that north or south side of the nature park, there's a lot of those things. But this, more importantly, includes a lot of our infrastructure and other city sites, like our well sites and some of those things, that we need to protect those assets a little bit too, so.
Yeah, and, you know, it seems like we're always saying, oh, we had vandalism here, and we go, oh, did we see it on camera? Oh, that camera's not working. Well, that's what this premium support is designed, they're going to come in and upgrade our cameras, and, you know, if stuff's not working, they'll come in and fix it, and it's all included in that support price. Colin?
And I think that's something very important to look at. I've been involved with this clear back when I was an officer here, and I was over the security, and it's something I pushed for a lot of years on protecting our infrastructure, protecting our city on what we invested in, and also making it better for us as we move forward to protect that stuff. And as we looked at that, I've been pushing this for a lot of years to try to do that. We haven't done that because of money, and I think it's a good time to start looking at this to move forward. Also, to get away from keys, to also to do access control and move our whole city over to that, that's the new thing that we should be doing already. But it's also, as we move forward and building more on there, we need to make sure we budget this and look at this, so we can put this into the budget when we add on another building or add on another facility to protect that. Because there's a lot of time, we spend a lot of money trying to redo and go back. And I tell you, anybody knows our water system? You got one thing of oil in there, we can really mess up our water system in this whole city for a lot of years, a can of oil. And even our wastewater, that's, we need to protect that. What comes in and what goes out, we need to protect that. So I think it's a good thing. I've been heavily involved with Todd, looking at this, and this is a start. And they also need to understand, these are like computers. It's not something that you just do once and then forget about it. It's something that you continue to involve and continue to upgrade. I like the companies that we looked at, because you just don't put them up and forget about them. Because you want it, if you have these type of things up, you want to have the information to come back when you need it. You don't want to go back to, oh, that camera's down, or that door was not locked. You need to make sure it's up and running at all times. And these companies that we narrowed down to said they do that and evaluate that quite regularly, I think quarterly.
I think it was quarterly.
Or every six months, it was close to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Regularly, whatever that is. At least annually.
Yeah, that's one of the things I was, I liked to, Brian, did you have a question?
I was wondering, are we going to look at the budget adjustment sheet? I just wanted to make sure I was understanding everything. Okay.
I can explain.
Okay, and then, so then who manages all the cameras? Like IT just manages them all?
So, right now, we're doing that. One of the things that I heard from the IT Director in Twin Falls County, JP Donnelly, he told me that he sees M2 as like an extension of their IT department, that that's how good they are, that it's just, they're a text away, and they show up and they help and do all those things. And so it'll be a partnership between us and M2. There'll be some things that we'll do. Maybe there's problems, and we'll get them on the phone, and they'll say, we'll try this and this and this, and if it's not an easy fix, then they'll come and take care of it for us. So it'll be, it'll be a partnership between us and M2. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I remember before we were, we've talked about this before in Budget Means, I remember saying that we didn't have enough, like, manpower in IT, so I just was trying to make sure I understood.
Yeah, so, so as we were, Patrick and I have been talking about that quite a bit too, especially after our discussion yesterday, but it's, we don't do a lot with the cameras right now, because we've got other priorities, but that's half the problem, right? There's more that should be done with the cameras to keep them up and functioning and monitoring and all those types of things, and so M2 will kind of bring that next level to the table for us.
Yes, go ahead.
So that brings up the question, you know, with any, with any big IT kind of project, it's kind of sold to us that it's going to save us lots of money, and it's going to, it's going to save us manpower and those kinds of things, but, but it usually ends up costing us more.
Yeah, I'm not here to tell you this is going to save you any money. This is not going to save you any money.
So is it going to take additional personnel?
No.
To run all this?
No, it won't. So, right now, Patrick and I are the ones that manage and maintain the access control system, and it will actually be easier to do in the new environment, because a lot of the issues that we run into, we'd be able to do from our mobile phones, rather than, you know, logging into this server and then remoting to that server and then connecting to this server. I mean, it's just going to be a lot easier and faster to take care of. The cameras, there will be more of them, but overall, I mean, if M2 is maintaining them for us, there isn't much more maintenance on our part to do. They're really there for the departments to monitor, so, like Public Works and some of the, what do you call them? Can't think what your lead guys are now, just foremen. Some of the foremen out there, they'll have access to that camera system, so they can monitor their own systems. The police department already has access to cameras, they can monitor stuff, and so a lot of the departments can monitor their own facilities without, you know, coming to us and doing sorts of things.
So this, so the cost here that we're talking about is, I mean, that's a one-time cost, but there's obviously an ongoing cost.
So the four, there's about $400,000, a little more than that, out of the gate, a one-time cost for the implementation and construction of all of that stuff. And then with the premium support service, it would be $40,000 a year for 10 years.
And then, and then for that, you know, they'll, they'll do all the maintenance and all of that work for us, as well as replace everything after 10 years, it'll all be replaced. So basically, that $400,000, we kind of get a two-for-one on that, because they'll replace everything after 10 years.
Right.
So.
Mayor wondered.
The other thing too, I was just going to throw out there, is it will cost us money, but, and I don't know that it'll save us that much money, but it might save us some money on replacing things and having to go out and fix, you know, graffiti on buildings and things like that. If people know that they're being monitored, it may save us some time and money on those kind of things, which are sort of sunk costs, but, yeah, go ahead.
Another thing we looked at, so I sat through a lot of these meetings with Todd, and we've looked very close to the partnership with the company that we can develop and continue that partnership. It wasn't just one-time sell, cameras, put this up, it's a partnership that they work closely with us and take that load off our IT. I know it's going to, and another thing we look at, we're unusual here, because usually IT deals with just IT. We have Patrick here that's dealt with security also from his previous job, so that has helped out to develop this in a better way, so. It was very researched out as we went through this and tried to work which company we wanted.
I'm sorry, I just have another question. Okay, so then, if we saw someone was vandalizing something, then what's the next step? So then are the police going to come in, and are they on board with that? Because I remember once, a few years ago, when I became aware that some teenagers had jumped the fence at Rexburg Rapids, and they were riding sleds down the slides, and I remember like they looked at the surveillance, but then the police didn't want to do anything. I thought maybe they didn't even have time. So do they have time to, like, what will the steps be?
I'm not going to speak for Stephen and Spencer, but Patrick and I are already involved, I don't know, once, so, once a week maybe, three times a month, pulling footage for the police department for those very types of things, right? So I don't know if that'll change. We may still continue, I mean, we will continue to help them do that. Maybe there's some things they'll be able to be trained to do on their own, I don't know, but, but we do that already. We're happy to do that.
Yes.
So besides all of our parks, is the quad included in this?
Say that again?
Besides all the parks, playground equipment, is the quad, the baseball quad included?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they'll be, we've got cameras, there'll be two, I think they're fisheye cameras, at least they're 270s or something, so they'll cover all four fields and all the walkways in and all that stuff, so.
They walked around a lot of our, well, all of our facilities and just looked at everything?
Every, every single city-owned asset, well, I can't say every single, but all of the major buildings and locations and sites and parks and stuff will have something there.
And we also done this to look at, to protect this also. If we have something that happens, it also protects us because we have eyes out there. Someone slips, and we can protect this, go back to that video and bring it back up. And I remember the case that Councilman Johnson brought up, you know, we spent a lot of time on that case trying to bring it up and refund, but the problem is, some of those cameras were very old at that time, and they're even like 10 years old.
Right, resolution was bad.
The video on that was very hard, but we sent those pictures around to all the schools, all the, trying to figure out who those kids were. And the blue colt, I remember the case very clearly, the blue colt, the one kid had on, we thought we had it from another school district, but it wasn't matched up, right? But we couldn't see quietly quite good enough to be able to see that was that person.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, that solves that case.
Are you going to talk about the budget adjustments?
I guess it didn't solve that case, but at least it was an explanation. All right, so Matt's going to go over the budget.
I did stuff first.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah, we want to see that.
Okay. Oh, I thought I dropped it in there. Shoot. Maybe check finance, I thought we dropped it in there. Let me just explain it if we can't find it, but let me give you a little context too about where the revenue and the money is coming from. So, so we, we got like $6 million from a federal grant, the ARPA grant, several years ago, and that is how we paid for this ring, right, to go around the city for the fiber ring. And this is really the tail end of that project, because the purpose of that ring, the main purpose was to connect all our city assets. And so this is kind of wrapping up that project, if you will. And so what this budget adjustment is, which if we can't find it, I'll go email it to Deb here in just a second. Basically, what it is, is we looked at what is left in that fund, that construction fund, which includes revenues that were not just ARPA, it included urban renewal contributions, it included some general, general fund transfers. And then we just said, what do we need to close that out? And so the budget adjustment is actually for 1.234, or 1.23 million. And the reason why is we need to close out by the end of this fiscal year, that construction fund, almost close it out, I should say, it won't quite close it out. But basically, we, we will have about a million dollars left of that ARPA money that we would like to transfer to the wastewater construction fund for the headworks. And then the remaining amount left in that fund will be 434,000, which would be used for this project, to connect all those assets. And the way it would work is we were asking for 234,000 to be in the, that fiber fund this year, and then another 200,000 in October for fiscal year '25, to finish it out. And so, so sorry, I can't show you that, but, but that's in essence the budget adjustment. And then going forward, the 40,000 that we're talking about on annual support, that would just be dispersed out to the departments that have those respective cameras and door access readers. So, does that make sense?
So it's ARPA, it's leftover ARPA funds?
Well, it, it, not necessarily, because like I say, there was, there was millions of other dollars that flowed into that construction project from contributions in the urban renewal and from the city. And so the way that we're earmarking it is, we are showing the million dollars that's left in ARPA to be spent on the wastewater treatment plant. And we're doing that on purpose, because we have to report how that money's spent. And the one thing I didn't mention too, is we're actually, part of the budget adjustment is, the state still needs to pay us $433,000 for their portion of the cost for that fiber ring. And so that's also part of it, that revenue coming in, so. It would be a lot easier if you could see it. But hopefully that made sense. I'll have to email it, I guess. I must, I swear I saved it in there, but maybe I put it in the wrong month.
Is that, there is mud, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, then I would at this time entertain a motion to make that budget adjustment and approve this item. Is there such a motion?
Mayor, I'll make, I'll make that motion to approve the budget adjustment for the access control and surveillance.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Any none o in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes, we'll go ahead and keep working with them and get things secured up, we think that'll be good.
Mayor, before he.
... term for all of the technology terms, too.
Thank you, Todd, we appreciate your.
Todd, before you sit down, can I ask Todd a question?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Last month, we had a resident at our council meeting that asked the question about fiber connections for new developments after January of 2026.
Oh, yeah.
What's the answer to that? I know I've got neighbors that opted out. If two years from now they sell their home and the new resident wants fiber, how do they go about it, and what kind of costs are they looking at?
So, so it's still going to be possible for residents after the fact. I mean, if they, if Lightbridge installs fiber in their neighborhood, passes their home, and they choose not to get connected at this time, right? That's the scenario we're talking about, right? So there's no fiber connected to their home, but it is on their street. So after the fact, Silverstar has told us that they're, you know, right now it's free, but after the fact, there's going to be some cost associated with it. They don't know 100% what that cost would be. I kind of pressed Brock Walters over at the Lightbridge office last week, kind of hard for it, and he threw a number out. I hesitate to throw it out in this public meeting, because I don't want to put him under the bus, but I will say that the number he gave us is a fraction of what AM and residents are paying for their fiber. So it will be really low, more than likely, but. really low, more than likely, but it's still something that they would have to pay.
So basically, right now, it's kind of like, it's a, it's a promotion to get people on for free and then, and then after, later on, they'll have to pay a fee, which is pretty normal. It's just a great opportunity right now to get on.
I would, I would tell residents that ask that, I mean, there is absolutely no obligation whatsoever to them to get connected to the fiber. It's, it's free. They should, there should not even be a question, right? That flyer shows up on their door, they should, they should go do it. They don't have to take any internet service from Lightbridge or any of the providers at all. But it doesn't cost anything to have that fiber on their home.
Oh, yeah. So they could, they could get it connected to their home even if they don't sign up with any of those providers?
Yep.
Then at least it's connected.
Right. It's gonna increase the value of their, the resale value of their home and, and everything. There's no reason why they shouldn't do it.
It is kind of a no-brainer.
So what's the cutoff date at which if they request fiber, they'll have to pay?
So I don't know the answer to that. You know, in a perfect world, we want them to get connected while Lightbridge is in the neighborhood doing the work, right? So if they're done with Henderson, for example, to have a resident come back now and say, you know, we want fiber, those are mobilization fees that Lightbridge has to incur to get contractors back out there to do it. And so-
I guess we ought to get that clarified, you know, if they're past the neighborhood and on, moved on to the next one, then maybe it's at that point that they would incur a fee to get-
I, I think, I don't have the answer. We really ought to have Brock come back in and do a, you know, kind of an update on the project. And maybe those would be good questions to ask him directly, right?
That, that might be good. If you wouldn't mind, just maybe see if you could schedule him to come at one of our next meetings and maybe prep him with those questions so that he has some answers for them.
Next week? Or, you thinking next week?
A couple of weeks probably would be fine. I think, I don't know. What do you think? Do you want to know right away or two weeks?
Well, it's, it's maybe July's meeting?
One thing, one thing that I would bring up to, to them is that it was not made clear to the residents that they could hook up for free, but not take the service.
That's true.
Well, because that's not what they want, right?
Yeah. So, so that, that was not made clear. I would not have known that. If I didn't, I, I mean, I signed up and it's great, but, but my neighbors I know probably didn't sign up or didn't get connected because they thought it, they'd have to sign up for the service.
Yeah.
And pay the ongoing fees. So I think that was not made real clear.
That's probably true, yeah.
I know that they came through my neighborhood and hooked up when I was gone. And I kept in on the fence. And if I decided to hook up and they were out, they came right back the next day, but they were down in Willowbrook.
Yeah.
And they hooked me up, so.
Yeah, we'll talk to them and see.
They really are, for the most part. I mean, I know there's issues around. And there are a handful of residents that are unhappy with the way things are going, their yards and sewer lines and whatever. But for the most part, Lightbridge and Western Mountain, I mean, they're just awesome to work with. They really are.
Compared to most other contractors that dig up yards, they've been doing a really good job. Yes, Mike?
So what about new development? We didn't address that. Is that something still that's-
So their commitment to us was that they would cover everything that was within the city limits as far as the city stood, right, all the residents and houses that were there as of December 31st to 2023. That was what they agreed to. So I know that they were in a conversation with the Summerfield developers last week or the week before. It was last week we were in AIC. So I don't know how that meeting went yet, but they are interested in getting into those subdivisions while the roads are open and, and all of that stuff. It's to their advantage, right, to do that then. So, but they're not obligated by our contract to do that. That's on them if they choose.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or anything for Todd? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead with our financial report with Mr. Matt Nielsen.
Well, they kind of already did it. Well, that's what I tried to describe, but there's the numbers that puts it to it. It says 2.23 because we have to do a transfer between the funds. But that's what, are you guys still good with that? Or you want me to go through any more details on that one?
Is there any questions on that other than what we already talked about?
So they can just kind of see.
I think we're, I think we're okay.
I know all those budget numbers. They just make a ton of sense, so just, okay. All right. So let's, let's jump into the finance reports. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on it, but basically, this report that we provided is through May, and we've spent about 33% of the budget, which were 66% through the year. So it kind of gives you an idea. And then the only other thing that I would just say is that far-right column, I'm not gonna go through the cash report tonight, but that fall right, or the far-right column shows you, you know, where that cash is in the respective funds. And so there's, we're investing about 50 million roughly. And yeah, I, I don't think there's probably anything else that's changed dramatically since we saw it last time, so.
Any questions on the financial report here? Give you a moment to digest it a little bit. Okay. Hearing none, let's move on to item number two.
You have one? You have to remind me, the entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial, you have to have that fun. Can you, I think we've already talked about, but can you remind me why it's so high?
Remind you why it's so high?
It wasn't that high, yeah.
Yeah, it's, we, we're gonna need to, so I'm gonna bring you guys kind of the five, final year-end amendments, probably the next meeting, if not that one, the following meeting, one of the next two. But the reason why is we had a huge pass-through grant of $500,000 for that entrepreneurial center.
Neither was a reason.
So it's coming in and going right back out.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Question?
Okay. All right. So let's hit the next budget adjustment. So on this one, this is for the ADA playground. So let's pull up the, the picture real quick. So the, the, there should be one that has a drawing. Yeah, that's, right there, you had it. Go down to, one more, right there. Yeah. So let me kind of show you guys this. So this is at Smith Park and the Parks Committee, Staff Committee has been working on this for quite a while. So what it is, we already own the swing set that you can see in that brown area. We've had that swing set for a few years. And then we'd like to also do an ADA inclusive whirl, is what they call it. So that's that round figure that you can see there. It would go next to the other playground. And then you can see, we would have to widen the existing sidewalk that's there by the tennis court so that, so that the accessibility is there. And so all in, well, let me ask you, do you have any questions on the design or layout before I jump into the costs? Okay. And you can pull up the budget adjustment, Deb, but, so all in, this project would be almost $64,000 to complete this project. And where the money would be coming from would, basically, we did get a grant. So 25,000 of it would come from a grant from the Christopher and Dana Reeve Foundation. And then the remaining amount is just, it already been set aside in the Parks Construction Fund. We've been setting, setting aside for this for, for years, about 50,000 a year roughly in saving up.
And, and I will throw in there too, and I know I've talked about this before, but it's, we're getting closer. I've got a meeting with a company here in town that I've talked to about maybe possibly giving us another 20, 25,000 maybe towards that. And so if that comes through, then we won't need to spend that much. We can push that money back into the Parks Construction Fund for something else.
Yep.
But they haven't committed yet, so we'll see. So I'd say we probably ought to go ahead and do this so that we can kind of get it, get the ball rolling and get it done. And then hopefully they'll come through with, with some more contribution for us. So, any questions about this? Okay. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Not a question. I just want to say, I know, you know, I've talked to one mother in particular that's just so thankful for this, you know, they've been waiting for it and-
I think it'll be a great addition, actually. I think it'll bring people even in from, out of town that, you know, that wanna bring their kids to play on something like that. So I think it's a good addition to our parks. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve this budget adjustment.
I'll make a motion. That way you approve this budget adjustment for the ADA playground equipment at Smith Park.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chambers. And any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Thank you. We will move on to item number three, which is a budget adjustment for the Tabernacle Tower repair. Bring up the information on that.
Okay. There's, there's actually quite a few documents in the folder on this, but I'll, I'll just summarize. So a few, I don't know, it's probably been close to, a few months ago, we came with some change orders for both the Romance Theater and the Tabernacle. You guys approved the Tabernacle change orders, and then you also approved the Romance Theater change orders for just over $90,000. We have not awarded the one at the Romance Theater. We awarded the ones at the Tabernacle. But as they've went through and completed the cleaning and, and prepping for everything over there at the Tabernacle, they've came back essentially with two large change orders. And these two change orders would add up to right around $50,000, just over $50,000. And what it would do is it would address the parapet capstone, and then it would also pin seven different cracks on the tower stones and nine displaced archstones that are on those, I think it was, well, on the front there. And so you can kind of see some of the pictures here. But staff looked at this. It would take a, a budget adjustment from contingency. We, as staff, would highly recommend that you do this. And also do the Romance Theater one. We do feel like we're getting a pretty big discount because they're already here, they're mobilized, they're on site. And so that is the, the proposal. And so we're looking to see if that's, if you guys are in agreement with that. And if so, if you want to approve a budget adjustment so that we can award this additional change order for around 50,000 at the Tabernacle.
Okay. Is there a question? Yes, go ahead.
So can you remind me who is doing it, which company?
Um, huh, shoot. HydroTech, yeah.
Where are they, like, how much is it saving us to do them?
Well, they're based out of Salt Lake, right? Aren't they Salt Lake Company?
Yeah.
And then they, I mean, their crew is just basically here for all summer, right? Working on that building. And so-
It was, it was a lot. What, they said that if they were to come back and do it later, it would be like, was it triple the amount or something like that? It was a crazy high number.
I mean, I, I didn't, they didn't tell me. Is that what they told you? But-
That's what I heard from Jeff.
Okay.
And these issues go to structural integrity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the one basically falling out. So.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it really has to be done. And the trouble is, over there at the Romance, you know, with those, the bricks and stuff there, it's, you know, the, the longer we go, the worse it gets, you know, 'cause, 'cause that, you know, you've got those cracks. And so that gets more moisture in them. And then it starts, you know, getting more of it falling out. And so if we have to have them come back later, not only will it be more expensive to get them back, but it'll, there'll be more work to do because it's, it'll get worse.
Yeah. I, I probably should note, on the Romance one, the price is the same, but the way they're going to address it changed slightly because we did send it to the state historical preservation, SHPO they call it. And they came back with some recommendations and, and HydroTech adapted to those recommendations because that's a historical building. So.
And is that coming out of contingency?
Well, that one, honestly, the Romance Theater one, we originally transferred it back out of what was going to go to the Tabernacle.
Right.
Because we were under budget for what we had budgeted.
For that, yeah. So, do you have another question? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, I mean, project this size, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a big project. There's always going to be some change orders as they get into it. Obviously, these are needed. Do you anticipate this is the last of the change orders we'll see?
I, I mean, I, I wouldn't say yes for sure, but they've done the cleaning. They've exposed all the cracks and the grout issues. And so they, and they basically gave us this, what, it's been three weeks now, and I haven't heard any other change orders of you. So.
Yeah, they, they've gone over the building pretty thoroughly. And I, I feel like this will be pretty much it. You know, you never know. But, but it seems like for as much, as long as they've been on the buildings and looked at them and, you know, been over them, I, I think they've pretty much found everything that needs to be done. I, you know, crush your fingers.
Did we get to the bottom of what the roof drain problem was?
Yeah. Do you want to report on that, kind of what you guys found on that Romance one?
Okay, we're green. Yeah, so we went and TV'd that roof drain and everything was fine on the, the roof drain going down. Some of the things that, when they looked at it, HydroTech looked at it, looked like they were saying, well, probably some of this was, probably pressure washed off, some graffiti on there. And so that's why you see some of that grout that pulled out and why maybe we see some of that oxidation happening on the bricks.
Which is something that we might save money on, having a camera. Some of those kind of things, maybe. But yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just, okay, so I'm sure I have the unpopular opinion here, so I'm sorry. But I have a hard time with spending as much money as we do on those two buildings. I understand preserving them, but I mean, it's hard for me that the money comes out of the same fund as like the police. And, you know, we cut for the next fiscal year, we cut back on the police, the amount of money we were gonna put in there. I would rather see money go to other places. And so I guess, I, every year that I've been on the council, we have said, this is the last big amount we're gonna spend on these buildings. It feels like that's what we've said. And then there's always something else. And so like with the Romance, there's probably gonna be another, you know, when we get in there and fix that, we're probably gonna see something else. And so it's gonna be more than that. And so if it were up to me, I would say, I understand it's a big savings, but I would say Romance was not in the budget. So let's wait on that. Let's take care of the Tabernacle. That's my opinion. I'm sorry. I just, I have a hard time spending as much money as we do on these buildings. So.
Well, and I, I understand your opinion. I kind of feel the same way, other than, other than the fact that I, I don't want to have to come back and spend more on them later, which, you know, the repairs need to be done. I mean, the, it's, it's there. And if we can save the money and get it done now, I think we should. Just because, I mean, I know where you're coming from. It would be nice to be able to put that money somewhere else. And there's a lot of other places we could put it. But I think, in my opinion, I think it's, it's foolish for us not to take advantage of the fact that they're here. And, you know, they're a company that, they do a really good job. We're, we've been pretty impressed with what they do. And I, and I think, I, I think to get it done and have it done and save the money on it, I think is a good thing. So, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying though. I, I do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm assuming that previous councils have made the determination that we want to preserve those two buildings going forward.
Mm-hmm.
That decision, if we, if we want to support that decision, we have to understand that we're gonna spend money on them. I mean, they're old buildings. It's just like a, I mean, they, they're a money pit. They're gonna continue to be a money pit. So if we either have to make the decision that we're not going to support the decision of the previous councils, and we're going to do away with the buildings, or we've got to make the decision that we're gonna have to continue to spend money on them. And, and then that's what it boils down to. So that's, if we want to have that discussion about whether we want to continue to preserve them, then we can have that discussion. But until we do, I think we just have to recognize we're gonna continue to spend money.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, you can.
I totally understand all your points. And I know, I might as well just like save my breath because I'm the only one that feels this way. But I feel like when we talk about other things in the city, we don't say, you know, well, this has to happen because it's gonna have to happen at some point. Like, we don't say, well, we have more children than we can provide playground equipment for, so we have to build this park this year. We don't say that about anything else except these two buildings. And we say, well, we have to fix them because we've decided this and that. And so I guess I don't understand why they're viewed differently because if it's something else, we might say, well, it wasn't in the budget, so we have to wait. But when it comes to these buildings, I feel like everybody just says, well, it has to happen anyway, so we'll just put the money in there. And so I guess to me, I feel like it's a discrepancy between the way we take care of them and the way we take care of other things in the city. But that's just my opinion. I'm just putting it out there. I know that you all disagree. That's fine. So.
Go ahead.
I understand both, as we talk about this, both sides, but my biggest concern is trying to bring them back. Because I know you bring them back, you're gonna charge like three, maybe three times, four times or more, bringing them back on here to have done. When we have them here, we like the company, we're- When we have them here, we like the company, we're doing, and have them to do the work. And I say we just do the work.
And I, I guess Councilmember Johnson, to address that, I, I would disagree a little bit with you, because, you know, there are other things, you know, there's road projects, we say, you know what, we, this has got to be done, we got to do it. There's, you know, other things, you know, parks and playground, you're right, they do sometimes take a, a bit of a backseat to some of the things that we feel like, if we don't do them, things are going to fall down around us. You know, sewer and water things, sometimes we say, you know what, this has got to be done, because if we don't, we're going to have, you know, we're going to have some really bad problems. So I, I would disagree a little bit with you on that, 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 that's the, that these buildings are the only thing that we say have to be done, but...
I'd say the only non-essential.
Oh, well, that, that could be true, yeah.
Because what you're saying, roads are essential, and those buildings are non-essential.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. That is true. Okay, well, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion to move forward with this budget adjustment.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the budget adjustment for Tabernacle Tower repair.
Okay.
I've got a question for you. Do we want to include the Romance in that, too?
You don't need to, because you've already...
We already did.
Yep. Yeah, we would base, you know, we'll, we'll just move forward and award it now.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. That motion is on the table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Council President Walker. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you, that motion passes, and we'll, thank you for that report, and we will move on to item number four, which is the update on the Squire's property.
Okay, so, go ahead, yeah, pull that up. So when we, when we say Squire's property, this is the property we're talking about on the screen here. So it's over by the Development Workshop off of Stationery Way. So basically, what we just wanted to bring you guys up to speed on, and just make sure that you're in favor of this direction, is we would like to put this out to RFP for development and to sell. So I, I would imagine, you know, before, we had talked about just selling the property outright, you know, putting a minimum and make offers, right? But we would like to go in a direction where we actually have people say, hey, we'd like to pay this much for the property, but this is what we're proposing to build on the site. And the thought there is, is we, we really want to maximize it to its highest and best use. We are going to have, we've got an appointment, I think it's tomorrow or the next day, we're going to talk to the adjacent property owner and see if they would allow us to basically say, hey, we're putting out this RFP, and would someone be able to potentially acquire some more ground from you if, for a, a development? So maybe there's a development that needs more than the one acre we own, right? Maybe they need two acres. So, so really, it's, it's just more informational, that that's the direction that we would like to move on that. You guys had already surplus'd it a couple of years ago, and we actually listed it, and we, we did not get an offer on it at our minimum. But the price of that is also probably doubled since that. You know, the realtor, from what we had back then versus what the realtors are telling us now, it's, it's actually more than doubled, so...
Yeah.
So anyways, I guess it's informational, but I, we just want to know your thoughts on that direction, if you guys are on board with us going ahead and moving forward in that way.
I think we need to maximize, like you say, the best we can.
Yeah.
So you're suggesting that we do, that the RFP is for the sale of the property, not to retain the property and develop it?
Right, so we, it would basically be to, to sell it to someone that will then develop it, right? Similar to what we did in the downtown, other than we're not going to maintain any public infrastructure on it, like a public parking lot, right? So in the end, the developer, whoever buys this, they're going to own it, but we're going to have a say in what type of development goes there.
Okay, I understand that.
I agree with that.
Can you just remind me what it's zoned as? Is it, is it community business?
Just commercial, I think, isn't it?
That's what I thought, I was just making sure.
CBC?
Yeah, and, and, and we already, I think we have, last time I checked, I think we have over thirty people on a list that want to be made aware when this goes out.
That's very, a lot of interest.
Including the adjacent property owner.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. All right, let's see, that was just an update, that's not an action item, so is there any other questions about that from anyone? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Matt, we appreciate those reports and all that work. We will move on to our Public Works Report with Mr. Keith Davidson.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So just one item of business that we need to take care of, and it's just surplusing property, so we have a desk from the police station that we want to surplus, as well as the playground equipment at Rotary Park.
Okay, so we've got, yeah, the desk and the playground equipment. So if you know of anybody that's interested in the playground equipment or a desk, you can let them know. That playground equipment does need a little bit of repair, but could be done. Okay, any questions? Yes, go ahead.
I have a lot of questions.
That's, that's fine.
I, I guess, I thought, when, so someone contacted me that lived there, you know, when they were all upset about this, I thought, they said that, the city told them that the Rotary Park owned the playground equipment, so it was the city that owned it, because they said in planning and zoning, it was said that it was already a done deal because Rotary Park had taken the playground equipment out. But, so they just must have misunderstood that.
Rotary donated the land and may have paid for the equipment, I don't know, but at no point did, Rotary did not own any of this.
Okay.
But there was a reversion clause in the contract that said, if we determined not to maintain it as a park any longer, then they would get it back, the Rotary Club. That's when we met with them and said, if it reverts back to you because we are no longer going to use it as a park, would you be, be willing to donate it, and we'll put proceeds towards...
The other park. Okay, that makes sense.
So I don't know where the confusion would have come from, it's always been the city's park, the reversion is what took us through that process of getting the donation back from Rotary.
Okay, there's just been a few misunderstandings, so I wanted to make sure I understood to explain it, so, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, all right, any other questions or comments? If none, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and surplus these two items.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we surplus the playground equipment at the Rotary Park and the desk from the police department.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion passes, we'll go ahead and list that out. Okay, thank you, Keith, any other questions for Keith? Is, oh...
Just give a quick...
All right, whose first? Hang on.
On the interchange projects, this is...
Yeah, yeah, that, I'm sure everybody's asked, wants to know about that, so...
So they're looking at next Tuesday, opening the South Interchange. Now, it's not going to be a hundred percent complete, so they're still going to be working on the South Interchange, but they're hoping to be able to open it up to traffic going through there. And then they're looking at July twenty-second to fully close the Main Street Interchange on that one. And in the interim, right now, they've got ARCO going heavy to, to get all the signal equipment installed at the South Interchange, and then they're going to jump to the North Interchange to get the signal equipment installed at the North Interchange.
Okay, questions? Yes?
So is the South going to be complete by the twenty-second, when they close the Main Street one?
That would be ideal. I don't have a, a date on that, they have, so they're getting it all paved, there's still going to be curbing that still has to go in, there's still all the landscaping that's going to have to go in on that, so I don't have a, a firm date. I'm sure they're hoping that that will be the case.
My guess is there'll still be some detail work being done, but the roads will be open.
Will the signaling be functional?
The signaling, yes, will be functional next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, they won't open it without that signal being functional.
Okay.
But they're going to end up placing a bunch of, because the curbing is not all going to be in, so they'll be placing a bunch of candles to delineate where that curbing would be on there.
So is it going to be, like, even slower than right now, going through Main Street, when that one's closed and the South is open? Is it going to be, like, even more backed up?
Well, more backed up.
Good news.
Well, I feel like...
Backed up alone, as you can just go down.
There will be, yes, I mean, anytime, anytime we take that volume of traffic and you move it into one lane, right? That, the things that will be better on this one is that both signals on both sides are going to be interconnected, so timing-wise and how things move through there will be a little bit better than what's currently at the, the Main Street Interchange.
Sounds pretty bad.
It'll still be a lot of traffic, I'm sure, but...
We're going to have a mess.
But you can pull up and go to Applebee's if it's a bad backup.
Can you tell us what's happening on the North Interchange, the Main Street Interchange, just west, just barely west of the, the Dutch Brothers?
So just barely west.
Is that, is that the lane that, that pulls traffic off the freeway?
That's the drive-through to Dutch Brothers. It's all part of their...
No, it's, it's on further.
Okay, so you're talking about...
It's theirs.
Is it?
Someone's worked on it.
That's a lot of area, then.
Yeah, well, there's going to be a, an area that kind of curves through there, so that lane that's going to come off of US twenty. So I don't know if you've been down to the South Interchange, you can really start to see how that looks and how those lanes, because they do have some of that curbing. And so if you look at the South Interchange, you'll see how that is laid out. But yeah, there's, they, they end up purchasing ground next to Dutch Brothers, so that, that way those lanes can sweep in on there.
Okay.
However, none of that is being excavated yet. Everything that is moving out there right now belongs to Dutch Brothers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
When they close that interchange on July twenty-second, what, what again is their anticipated reopening date?
So, the idea would be before the students come back into town.
It'd be probably right around Labor Day or something.
Yeah, somewhere around that date.
Yeah. Okay.
Crush your fingers.
Yes, more questions?
Sorry, just a couple more. Do you know, so are they still going to let pedestrians through on the South one, when they, like, they're not going to, they're always going to let pedestrians through, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In fact, I don't know if you noticed, they have a sign there saying, if you're a pedestrian needing to get through, call this number.
Yeah.
That way they can help them get through.
Yeah. Okay, and then that crosswalk on Pioneer, do you know when they're going to repaint that one on there?
On Pioneer Road?
Mm-hmm.
So we scheduled, and they've, they've started painting the, the crosswalks out there, but I don't have a, a firm date of when that one exactly is going to be painted.
Okay.
Typically, well, how long does it take to do all of them, usually? A few, a couple of weeks or more than that?
Well, it depends, generally, they come in at nighttime, so they try and do it right when traffic, there's the least amount of traffic, so generally, they're, they're doing it in the middle of the night, and they're coming through and, and painting those. So I'm not sure how far they've gotten so far. I mean, I could ask them when they're going to be on Pioneer Road, and then I can let you know.
I know I said this last meeting, but I just, I bike that way to work, and so I have seen a couple of times children cross there, but there's not a crosswalk painted, so I just feel like it's pretty dangerous, because...
You're talking about the one right on...
By the park side, Townhomes across the Park Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looking for...
Can't hate to be a broken record, but have you heard anything about that light at Yellowstone and University?
Uh, yeah, so I, I visited Joel on that, and we're trying to get that completed, hopefully before Tuesday. So, yeah, we just have a cable that isn't connecting to that camera, right, until that puts it into the Max Recall on that, on that lake.
That'd be good if we got that fixed.
Yeah.
I'll move traffic.
Yep.
So Keith, when does it look like we're going to open up Second East down on that new section where the temple's going to be, so that's flowing there?
Yeah, so, so on Second East and Moody, so we're working with the contractor, they've got to get Moody Road in place, so that way we can go two lanes all the way. Right now, we just have one lane, it's two lanes, right, that they've paved down, but there's that section of Moody that they're widening out and getting Moody tie-in, and so once that's paved and in place, then we can open the two lanes all the way through. But until that, we, we can, and I don't have a date yet from the contractor of, of when they're going to be getting that paved.
And what's holding them up on the light system on the North Interchange? Because they said they'd have that up and on, and before they, before they did much here, and we're still not up, and...
Yeah, so I'm not sure exactly, I just know that they just said, ARCO, we want you, we need the South one completed before we push you up.
And it's the same company.
One, so...
And I know that everybody knows this is a nightmare out there in traffic on the West Side. My big concern is not just this now, you know, and I've talked to the state several times, and this is a ban aid fix to get our city back together, that we're a divided city. What are we going to do in the future? I mean, we don't want to have this happen the next fifteen years later, trying to do the exact same thing. We need to really think about our Seventh South Moody Highway, and really work with the state, the legislature, everything we can do to get this scene up and going, and not have the same type of problem in the future where we're jamming everything down and...
Yeah, so we do have a grant, right?
I know we have a grant, but...
We're working through, and that's, and it, it's not a short process by any stretch.
I, I just want to make sure we're...
It's definitely something we need to work on.
We're pushing that very hard and heavy back to the state, because we can't afford ourselves with the city, and, and the county can't afford it either. We got to figure out how to do this and work with the state, work with our congressman and stuff, to be able to get this up, because we're definitely a major divided city, you can see it right now. Just getting here tonight, it took me almost forty minutes to get here, and I had to go clear to three thousand, up to three thousand, back around, and my wife went out at the same time, just so it could be interesting, that she turned north to get in, I was three cars and turned south, and I did that, and I got clear to Walmart before she got to Mother Hibberts.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a stretch, a difference, what it took her to get that far out there.
Yeah.
It's a mess, but we knew it was going to be.
Yeah, it's...
But I do agree that, I hope, you know, I think this has shown that we need more ways across highway training out there, and I think that should be the priority, because that's where the development is. It's not to the east right now, it's to the west, and so the people out there are just suffering right now, it's really hard. So we should have more ways across, I think that should be a priority, so...
And that's, and that's why I think we need to really explain to the state, you can see the massive division of the city right now, trying to get the people this way.
So, yeah, we're going to use that grant to get those overpasses designed, and, and then we will, well, I think you're right, though, Colin, I think we need to keep pushing hard with trying to get not only the design work done, but to get them on the list to, to get it done.
Very much.
Yeah, so, so we'll, we will put that on our list to, to talk with people about, and we've, we've got an RPO meeting coming up, so we can hit them up about that again. Okay, uh, let's see, anything else? Hey Keith, thank you, appreciate that. All right, mayor's business, item number eight on the agenda. First thing, just an update on the hockey rink, they are going to start digging the hole a week from this Friday, next Friday, they're going to, we went out there and with Jason and kind of marked everything out as to where it's going to go exactly, and they're
to where it's gonna go exactly, and they're gonna, they're gonna start digging the hole for the hockey rink. And he, his goal is to have it up and open for December, December hockey and skating. And he, he says, he goes, from the interest that he's had and people contacting him about it, he says, he goes, "We may end up having to put an extension on it before too many years," because he's had so much interest and people contacting him about playing hockey and figure skating and all the things that go on in there. So, so it sounds like it's, you know, the news is getting out and people are excited about it. People coming from, a lot of people from Idaho Falls that go to, they go to Ogden to play hockey now, they're excited, because they can come up here and won't have to go clear down there.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes?
Would it, it'd probably be good to just mention that the placement of that pivoted just a little bit from...
Oh, yeah.
And then, and it's marked, so you can go see it out there, too.
You're not gonna what?
We're not gonna tear up the path, because we moved it, instead of having it kind of cocked to the side, we straightened it out, so that it'll go just parallel to the path. We won't have to tear that up.
That's really good news.
Yeah, so, it'll be, it'll take up a little bit more of the grass, but realistically, that grass in time is probably gonna become a parking lot anyway, because we're gonna need more parking out there as this gets more popular. So, so we'll, we'll just turn the soccer field north and south for now, or either that or just use it for smaller soccer fields for the littler kids. And, but eventually, I'm guessing that that's probably gonna be a parking lot. So, that's the update on that. Any questions on that before we move on to the next item?
It's good news.
Okay, let's see, you've got the Parks and Rec Committee objectives. If you'll just put any suggestions on there and get it back to me if you have any. If you don't, then that's fine. We'll just go ahead and go with what we got. Big news, it came over my phone just a minute ago, and that maybe some of you already heard this, but I think it's just official now, is that Rexburg native, Shari Hawkins, qualified for the Olympics. She finished second at the Olympic trials there in Oregon, so she's gonna be a heptathlete in the Olympics in Paris, starting on August the 8th. So, that'll be exciting to be able to watch, watch her perform, and that's, that's pretty exciting for, for us, I think, to have one of our, our citizens in, in the Olympics. I think that's really cool. Okay, and let's see, the two lots, the lots over there in Rotary Park that we put up for sale actually are already under contract. There was quite a bit of interest in those, and so, those, we're just working with the, with the realtor on that now. So, those are kind of my updates on things, unless there's any questions on anything about anything that I can answer.
Is the, are they putting in the path before they finalize that?
Yes. Well, I don't know if that, before we finalize the deal, but we'll be putting in the path before, I mean, timing wise on that path, do you have any idea, Keith? We, we've made sure to let them know that there will be a path, yeah.
I haven't got the numbers back to that, but, I mean, tentatively, the plan is hopefully when we're paving Party Gear Road and North Hill Road, have contract come over.
Oh, yeah, that'd be a good idea. Well, have them do it while they're on site. Good job. That's, that's a good move.
And I'll just mention, they're under contract for $115,000. We're asking one, and we got multiple offers on them.
So, yeah, that's good. Okay, next item would be, we'll move on to item number nine A, which is the staff recommendation to approve Resolution 2024-7, oh seven, for hard copy records destruction for accounts payable records and various hard copy contracts and miscellaneous documents. Is there any questions about this item? Deb, have you got any comments about that?
You know, mostly, we went back to the vault and found all kinds of really, like, credit card receipts from the golf course from, you know, 2006. We found a lot of junk.
You don't think those are historical records that need to be preserved?
I'm pretty sure they're not. So, those are, those are a few things. They're, they're in grocery bags, so...
Okay.
Nobody, I don't, I don't think we need to go through those. But we found a lot of that. We're gonna do the hard copies for accounts payable for fiscal year '23. Those are all in, the alls are all in munis attached to those invoices. Mostly, everything on here is my filing cabinet, so they're all hard copies. We have the paths in Laserfish where they're all located, and we're just looking, a lot of them are duplicates.
And the question I always ask is, they're all backed up, so that we don't lose them in case of some kind of a...
Yeah.
...disastrous thing, right? Okay, all right.
But...
I hope so.
That's what they are. My filing cabinet just got cleaned out, so that's what we're doing here tonight, basically.
Okay, thank you. So, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve that resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Council President Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, we will go ahead with that destruction. Item B, apartment project on 222 Moody Road in Madison County requesting to connect to city sewer services. Let's see, who's gonna, Keith, are you gonna address this?
Yeah, I'll take this one.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so, we've had the parcel... So, this parcel right here is requesting to receive city services sewer and water. They are outside, the red line is our city limits, so they are outside of our city limits, but they are in our impact area. And so, anything in our impact area, when we do our sewer and water master plans, we account for those coming into our system. So, we've accounted for that in our master plan. And so, one thing is, is until the main sewer line is in, I cannot service them with gravity. So, they would either have to work with district health on a temporary system, or look at a pressure line to get back over into our pressure line that runs down Second East. And so, looking at that, right now, our best case scenario for gravity sewer getting in place is probably towards the end of next year, as we work with property owners and the alignment and where we're gonna place that main gravity sewer line. So, those are some of the constraints with that. The other item, and I think we sent it out, oh, here, in the packets, is generally when they're outside of the sewer, so if someone develops and they're not taking any city services, we don't have any impact fees, right, that we charge. But anybody that's inside city limits, right, they have the impact fees. And so, if you, if you look at it, but we also charge additional fees for water and sewer when they're outside city limits. And so, when you look at the additional fees for the 228 units that they're proposing to build, you'd be looking at $447,336 for water and sewer capacity fees. But if you look at, if they were inside city limits with water and sewer capacity, and then the impact fees that go with that, you're looking at $648,432 for those 228 units. And so, I guess that, that is the question...
Are those, are those annual figures?
No.
One time?
No, those are one-time fees. So, when we talk about capacity fees, right, they're buying capacity in our water and wastewater system, and that's a one-time fee to purchase in that capacity. Then we have those annual fees for the usage of the wastewater and water. And then, the park, or the impact fees, those are just a one-time fee, right, that comes in, because we look at what our, what our level of service was at the time that we set those impact fees, and then we say, well, as we have additional people coming in, we need to keep that level of service, so it costs X amount of dollars to keep that level of service.
But the, the $400,000 that would be char, $400,000 that would be charged to the developer here, because they're outside the city limits, right?
Yep.
Does that include the, the construction work from their property to our existing...
No, no, they would, they would be required to do all of that in addition to these. This is just strictly capacity in our plant, so it doesn't have anything to do with lines being installed or anything like that.
My view is, I think it's only fair that they pay what our citizens would pay if they were in the city. You know, so I mean, I think...
Yeah, so with the impact fees, right? That's, that's, yeah, with that, in case.
If nothing, if people are gonna be buying property, getting it cheap, and then we annex them in there.
But can, can we do that, project by project?
Mr. Zollinger had said we could probably look at putting those in a development agreement, and then looking at ways, maybe to structure it in such a way as, as, because I think they're looking at doing condos and selling them off individually, capturing maybe those fees as, as those sell.
Some kind of flawback, right?
So, do we need to relook at the, the ordinance that addresses providing services outside of the city in a different way?
Well, we don't have...
Because we're giving them a discount, basically?
Yeah. You mean, because we're providing, so that, yeah, because we're not charging them for the extra?
Yeah.
We didn't charge them for the extra. I mean, you could, you could charge them for the extra and, and charge them the impact fees, right? That would be another option, which I lay out, but that's, that goes to $797,544, right? Or, the developer could look and say, "Okay, we don't want to pay that. We're gonna talk with the neighbor and see if he's willing to be annexed, so we can be annexed," because there is a property that's in between them, right, that does, right there. So, this property owned by Sidney Muir, right, if they were, if they were next to our city limits, we would just require them to be annexed into the city, and then we'd just go through that, that process with the, all the normal fees. But because of that separation, that...
I just, I feel unsettled of doing that when they're not annexed in, and I worry about what would come after, so I personally would rather have them annexed in before we did this. That would make everything so much simpler, and we wouldn't have to worry about setting a precedent for the future.
Yeah.
Because Roger Muir is never gonna...
Well, it's not Roger.
Not never, but...
It's not Roger. Sid.
Oh, Sid Muir.
Yeah, but we can't worry about individual developers. We have to worry about what's best for the city.
Well?
To me, I think it's, to me, I think it's smarter to have them try to communicate with the property owners next to them and be annexed in than try to jump like that over.
I'm, whatever you guys think, I'm, I think that's probably not a bad idea, or, I mean, if, if, if we were to have them talk to Mr. Muir and see if, if he wants to be annexed, and we could do them both at the same time. If he doesn't, then, yeah, it does become a little more complicated to put it in a development agreement and try to do it that way, but we could do that if we, if we felt like, I mean, I would guess that that's probably gonna be annexed before too many years go by. So, you know, if, if we can help facilitate and be able to build it, but, but have the, the agreements in place to be able to do it, you know, that would be one way to go, too. But, but I, I'm, I'm open to whatever you guys feel like you want to do. Is there...
The developers are here, if, if you want to hear from them at all, either.
Are you Mr. Heath? Oh, you, what, do you want to take a minute and address the council?
I'd love to.
Come on up, sure.
Want to just hit that one?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I think that's on, is it turned on?
It's on, yeah.
Oh, is it on? Then come on over.
Oh, well, yeah, go ahead and, go ahead and come on over there. I better check that and get some batteries in it.
Thank you. The project, we think, is a very desirable project for the city of Rexburg. It is unique. It will be an apartment condominium arrangement, and it will be one of the, if, if not the only, project in the city of Rexburg, where every of, one of the buildings will be, that it's a four-story building, all of the rooftops are geothermally heated, and they are all rec use on every rooftop. There will be...
Pickleball courts.
You said geothermally heated. Do you mean geothermal or solar?
Geothermal.
Oh, really?
Snow can't survive 40 degrees, and Mother Earth sits at 50 to 55, so she'll get the snow off, and we'll have pickleball courts up on there, barbecue and other sorts of things gathering. And it is an all insulated concrete structure, and what, it will be one of the greenest projects ever built in the city of Rexburg. And we understand your concern about the fees, and we really want to find a way that we can work together to accomplish this. A real possibility would be, because the neighbor between us and the city line is very hesitant to be annexed for some personal reason. It, it's gonna happen anyway. There's, as you say, within a couple of years, that whole area's gonna become part of the city of Rexburg. That's where the growth is going. We can put in a pressure line for the sewer and allow that additional project to be able to join in later on, or wait for the gravity to connect either way. And in terms of the funding and the impact fees, we would be willing to engage in a development agreement that would say, as we sell, that every unit sold, the city recoups those impact fees. And by the time we're done building it out and selling it, you will have gained a great project, all of the higher non-impact utilities to us, but you're gonna get the impact fees back anyway, and allows us to be able to develop it now, instead of having to wait a couple of years while we arm wrestle and persuade our neighbor to get on board and allow it to happen.
So, question, so, you, you feel like it's feasible to put in the sewer line and run it all the way down to connect into the, the other one and be able to, to do that?
In terms of the overall project, yes, it's very much worth it. The alternative is, when we're, when we're in discussions with the State of Idaho Environmental Group, the alternative is that we take it in partial phases, and we treat on-site temporarily, waiting for the gravity line to show up, and we just have a large septic field that later we destroy, abandon, and, and, and then expand the project. I don't think anybody wants to have any more septic fields stuck out in the agricultural lands, even though that's legally permissible and the state's amenable to it, the state, you know, that it's part of the regulation. We think that the, the proper thing to do is look down the road, and where's the city of Rexburg gonna be in five years? What's gonna happen in that area in five years? Then, why don't we act like that now? And we know that within two years, the gravity sewer's gonna be there, and rather than just delay the project for two years, why not allow it to move forward? And in the end, everybody benefits.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna happen anyway, that the only question is the timing.
Yeah.
And if we're willing to work with you on a development agreement that says, "We understand your concern, that because we're outside and the impact fees aren't there, it's a little inequitable." You know, I mean, you didn't create the Idaho state law that says you don't get to play that game. We're willing to say, as a developer, please, we're willing to work with you. Let's find a way to make this happen.
Any, any questions or comments from any, for Mr., I'm sorry, I forget your name, right? No. What's your name, last name?
Heath.
Heath, like candy bar.
Okay, yeah. Oh, I should remember that, I have a son-in-law.
Sweetest name in development.
Yeah. Questions?
So then, so, and, and I assume that they will be wildly successful, but we have to look at every, every scenario, so then, we're only gonna get our money back if you sell your condos with the way that you're talking about it, right? Our impact fees will only come back to us if you sold your condos. So, that feels like that's still a...
Well, but the impact wouldn't be there if they didn't sell them either, so, I mean, it's kind of...
But we put the line in.
No, we're not, we're not gonna put the line in.
So, we wouldn't be, there's no money if...
He has to pay for the line.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's willing, that's why I asked him a question about if he felt like he could put that pressure line in to bring it all the way back, and he said he feels like he can.
It makes, it makes better sense to us than do it in two steps, put in a, a, what we're, what we're talking to the state about is if we don't put the pressure line in, that we'll do enhanced aeration treatment, will our effluent discharge is at irrigation grade, and we can be used for irrigation or just dumped back into the aquifer. And then, we abandon the system in about two years, once the gravity line gets in there, and adexation becomes possible anyway. Well, we just sat on the thing and spent a lot of money that we're gonna bury or, or tear out. Why do that when we could have done it the other way?
Yeah, okay. That makes pretty good sense. Thoughts? Any other thoughts? You with Mr. Heath? Okay. Go ahead and come to the podium and tell them it's your name, please.
Hey, I'm Jerome Brzee. I'm a Rexburg native, and I tend to be all you eye. He's a lot kinder than I am, as far as donating to the cause of the city. I just want some clarification on the, how it's permissible to charge a different impact fee for county residents that are trying to connect compared to within city limits trying to connect? Why the fees differ if it's just pick and choose on who does connect and what they're charged?
They're, they're not the different, are they?
No, they'd, they'd be this...
Well, county doesn't pay taxes.
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason, oh, do you want to address that, Mr. Zollinger?
There's a...
Wait, turn your mic on.
There is a, there's a fee charged for anyone who takes our services that is not a contributor to the general fund.
Yeah.
County residents don't contribute to our general fund. So we charge a premium for anything outside. There's a couple of examples within the city already. One has been doing it for 40 years. They've been paying an outside the city rate, because they don't want to get annexed, but they recognize that the access to the system has a significant value to them. As far as the impact fees, we can, that would have to be resolved during the development agreement. If you were in fact going to pay the impact fee as though you were in the city, we may have to acknowledge that we would serve your customers at the city rate if you had already prepaid your impact fee with each sale.
Right.
You'd end up having the same rate.
Yeah, I just, I should have specified the different rate, not necessarily the impact fee, but a higher rate.
And a higher rate is allowed because of the disparity in, all of our citizens pay generally for some of the coverage for what it costs to just maintain the property within the city. And county residents don't, so we charge a slight premium if they want to use our services while they're waiting to get into the city.
Yeah, I understand that. I just want to know why we're paying a premium, but also wanting to be charged impact taxes if we are with outside the city limits? If we can do, I mean, either or, it, it's a $200,000 difference whether we're in the city or not.
Because we feel like it's a fairness issue. We don't, I mean, we could just say, you know what? We don't want, we don't want to do this, which is actually one of the options that, that we're talking about.
Yeah.
You know? Because you're not annexed, you're not in the city, you're not paying any city taxes, we don't want to connect you.
Yeah.
Now, I'm willing to entertain the, the other option, that if we can come to an agreement to be able to, you know, make it equitable, you know, your, your group with everybody else that develops, if we can make it equitable and make sure that, you know, those, those fees get paid, then, you know, I think that's an option that we can look at.
And I should have been more clear with you, Mayor. If we're putting in the pressure line, your, the city's not gonna incur that cost.
Right.
And what we're saying is, as part of the development agreement, if we say to you, we're gonna extend the line, and if we say we will pay the impact fees per unit upon sale...
Right.
Then the balance to that is that instead of the higher rate upfront, we would pay the normal customary rate, we incur the cost of the extension, and you get all of the impact fees as we sell the project out.
Yeah.
In the end, both of us benefit.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's a workable solution. I don't know how, I mean, if there's a discussion, council members?
I think that's beyond the scope of, of, of us here today. We just want, like, I, I'm not sure exactly what the action item is before us.
We, we require the council approval to serve anyone outside the city limits.
Okay, and then, and then the, the, the fees will be assessed or negotiated in the development agreement that will take place down the road.
So, so the action that we could take would be to, if we feel like we want to approve this and let it move forward, it, it could be based contingent on the development agreement, including the impact fees, as he said, to, to be paid as the, the units are sold, and that they pay for the sewer line to go in. So you had not commented?
Well, I...
Oh, sorry. Were you not done?
No, I, I just say, I'm not sure I would be willing to go that far at this point. I might be willing to say, well, yeah, let's connect them up if, if they are able to come to an agreement, in a development agreement, that is equitable with like properties within the city limits.
Right.
That would be my motion.
Well, that's, that's basically the same thing as what I said.
Will you allow us to, will you allow public works to deliver our services outside of the city to this property for the, for these purposes? We then will negotiate with them. If they, if we can't come to an understanding, that includes them building their own line to get to our, something that dumps into our system, and then they'll either be paying one and a half times the rate, which is what anyone else is doing, or if they prepay before they turn them on, the impact fee, which is probably more responsible for them, then we would drop them back down to a city rate. But that will all be presented to you as part of the development agreement.
Right.
It will be equitable based on when they pay their impact fees. We're not asking you to waive any of the fees.
Yeah.
All you want to know is if we're gonna, if we want to connect them or not. That's all you, all you want to know is if we want to connect them or not.
Service outside the city requires the council's approval.
So, so you're saying that we would see the agreement, and if it wasn't something that we were in favor of, we could then say no at that point?
It's gonna be one or the other. They're either gonna pay as though they are outside the city, and you will grant, allow them to deliver to our plant from outside the city, which means they'll be paying that outside the city premium. Or it will be an agreement that says, here's how they are going to buy their interest into this plant, even though they're outside the city. And that's the one that gets a little extraterritorial, but it's allowed under state statute. Neither one will treat them differently than anyone else. We've just never sold the services to somebody outside the city in anticipation of them coming into the city in the next couple of years.
So...
What you're gonna find out is that with the new impact area that I think you got a little bit of a teaser on earlier, we're gonna be asking for this more often, because the impact area is no longer manageable in the same way that it has been for the last 60 years.
So you're saying that that $200,000 discrepancy that we saw between like a city resident and what they were asking for, you're saying that that's gonna disappear and it's gonna be equitable?
Concern, they'll be paying it at each unit as they sell it. So they'll be buying down that discrepancy as though they had built this project inside the city.
So at some point, the discrepancy won't be even?
At some point, it'll look as though this got built, and they got charged as though it had been in the city when they started.
Does that make sense to everybody?
We just are pre-doing it, and we'll, we'll design that into the development agreement so that they ultimately pay what they would have paid were they in the city. Or they don't pay what they were paid, what we're going to pay if they were in the city, and they pay that 50% surcharge every month for the rest of their existence.
Yeah, the, the problem with that is that, again, it's only gonna be a year, or two at the most, before the, so, so we won't recoup all of that impact fee.
Yes, you will.
Oh.
When they sell. If they sell, we get it. If they get annexed, we get it. Either way, we're going to get those impact fees if they, if they want to get off of the 1.5 ratio.
Oh, okay.
If that's the case.
And I'm actually, I, I, and when we do the, the development agreement, I'm opposed to making an agreement that they can be, stay outside the city and stay on the one and a half thing, because I think we need to, you know, we're gonna be annexing them and...
It'll be up to you.
Yeah.
The, the rest of this development agreement is going to say, at such time as you become annexable, you have agreed to be annexed.
Yeah.
So we're really talking about that intervening property owner coming to a point in, in their life where they understand the value in being annexed.
Yeah, 'cause I was just thinking of like Rexburg Heights. We don't want another Rexburg Heights on our hands.
Moving forward as of this year, we are never signing anybody up for services that does not sign a piece of paper that says, I acknowledge that my accepting services commits me to annexation at such time as I become annexable.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was...
And is that recorded against the property?
Yes, it's recorded against the property.
Yeah, we want to be annexed, so we're, like, we want to pay for fire, we want to pay for police. It's just we're not contiguous, or contiguous with the...
Other property, yeah.
And we, yeah, our hands are kind of tied.
Yeah.
But my question was, if we do this development agreement, will we be able to drop the 1.5 times rate, even though technically we're still outside of the, the city limits, but we are giving you guys back all the impact fees upon sale?
That's, that's how we would design the agreement.
Yeah, that was my question.
If you don't pay the 1.5.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think we can work with that. So, yes, questions, anyone?
And just to clarify, 'cause I think we've kind of, we've said impact and capacity fees, but keep in mind the capacity fees are the water and sewer, the impact fees are the parks, police, streets, and fire, right?
Right.
And what we're saying is the one and a half only applies to the capacity fees, right? So everybody's on that same page. So I think what you're saying is, when you sell a unit, you want to be able to pay the capacity and the impact fees, or are you saying you would pay the capacity fees upfront?
We're saying that as part of the development agreement, we would be willing to engage now with the capacity fees, but at the standard rate.
Great. Yep, okay.
Not the one and a half, and we incur the cost of the extension, not the city, and upon sale, you get all of the impact fees, which is a, actually a long, a, a, a longer term, better deal for you, and it allows us to not have to wait.
Yeah.
Now, now what if, just a quick question, what if you finish the development and you decide not to sell them, but to keep them and rent them? What happens?
On the day we annex them, they would be obligated to.
Yeah, okay.
Fully payable.
They would have to.
Right. We would have...
Pay the whole amount.
That's part of our...
That's probably a better way to say when they're connected, because...
We're not backing out on you.
Right.
Okay, so when they're connected?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, right? So everybody understands.
Um, well, actually, I don't know, we'd have to define that, I guess. Would, would we, would we want to say when they're connected or when they're sold? Because that would, that could be two different things.
'Cause I think Matt brought up a good point.
The intent is to allow them to connect to our sewer immediately, or as soon as needed.
Yeah.
Build them, charge them for that connection as though they were inside the city, but defer payment until such time as they actually call for the service.
So, okay, so basically, that would be when they sell?
When we turn them on, that's when they start paying.
But if they decided to rent them like Matt said, then you're saying it's just when they're hooked up.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Upon call for service...
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah.
They will pay that, that impact fee.
Right. Okay, so as long as it's not when they sell, that makes so much sense to me.
And that gives them the ability to defer their payment, which, and that may be something we want to talk about going forward with all of our impact fees.
Yeah, we have talked about that.
Because that hurdle that we are constantly confronted with, people say it's a hurdle to development that we can't, that we have to come up with all this money upfront. Well, if we give, if we start charging our impact fees upon delivery or, or call for service, that, that's at least deferring that payment down the road for a while for these developers. But that's something that will require a change.
Yeah.
Because they're outside the city, we can vote on it. It's not part of our impact fee agreement. So we're asking you to do with them outside the city exactly what you would do if they were in the city, only we have to do it by agreement, and we're going to defer payment until they call for the service. That's the summary.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you certainly may.
Given what we've discussed in the development agreement potentiality, I make the motion that we approve connection to city sewer services for this development.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Walker. Any further discussion or questions?
Just briefly, do, do we need to include in this motion any contingencies about, about a development agreement that, in place or anything like that? We just...
Because if we don't reach an agreement, I'm gonna, I'm gonna charge them, Matt's gonna be charging them 1.5 for every gallon of septic solution they send to us.
I don't know that that's a bad idea, though, to, to make it contingent upon the development agreement.
Everything is contingent upon a development agreement.
Well, can we say it?
Development without a motion. So if we don't reach a development agreement with them, then...
That's why, that's why I said, given our discussion, referring back to the...
Okay. All right. Okay. Any further discussion? Any none in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, that motion passes. This will get you going. Okay. All right, let's move on to item number 10. Thank you, Mr. Heath and Mr. Brzee, for your comments and your explanations. Appreciate you.
And staff.
Good luck on your project.
We'll be, we, we want to have a council pickleball tournament when you get that done.
We'll do it.
On top of the roof. Yeah. Okay. All right, let's move on to item number 10, is our second readings, which we have none. Our third readings, we have one, which is ordinance number 1315 to Rezone 15 and 19 Sawtelle Avenue, from mixed use to Community Business Center. Is there any discussion about this before we move forward? Doing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this third reading.
Mr. Mayor, I shall move that we approve ordinance number 1315, its third read.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
By Councilmember Eric, I mean Colin Erickson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will consider that third read and move forward with that. Consent calendar consists of the minutes from the June 5th, 2024 meeting, also the new fireworks stand, conditional approval for JK Marketing, depending on passing the fire inspection, the transfer of off-premise YN license to Vishnu LLC for 15 North 12th West, which is the Mother Hibbert Service Station, transferring that to the new owner, and ratifying the payment of the city of Rexburg bills. Is there any questions about any of those items before we move forward?
Where's the fireworks stand?
That would be, uh, let's see, Deborah, do you know where that is? I'm not sure where that is.
Say it one more time.
The fireworks stand, where is it? This one?
Oh, uh, we go very well where this one is.
Oh, it's that one? Oh, it's the, on that, on our second east property.
Oh, that one.
Yeah, that one out there that's going up.
Yeah, they, they were in dire straits.
Yeah, they got their, they were gonna go in Cal Ranch parking lot, and they got their, Cal Ranch decided they didn't want them there kind of at the last minute, and so, they're actually the vendor that does our fireworks show for us. They're gonna add a bunch of stuff to our fireworks show to make it a lot better. Yeah, so, so it's, it'll, it'll work out pretty well, I think. Okay, is there a, a, a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I shall move that we can approve the consent calendar.
All right, second. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Eric Erickson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. That, before we adjourn...
We need to talk about the parade.
Yeah, Fourth of July preparations.
So who's all gonna be here for the parade? Is everybody gonna be here?
I think everybody's right.
I'll be here. I'll be here. You gonna be here?
I think everybody.
Dave will be here, too.
Reese, Councilman Reese, are you gonna be here for the Fourth of July parade?
Yes.
Yep, I will actually be in town for that.
All right.
So we need, so we need the golf cart, then we need five.
You need five? Okay.
Five?
Six.
We need six?
No, 'cause, do you need one?
No, I don't need one, but there's six of you guys.
I've got my own.
Oh, you're not gonna be here?
I have a family reunion.
Oh, okay. So we only need five, then? All right.
So, and he's got his own.
I've got mine.
Okay, so we need four.
So we only need four?
That's perfect because they need eight and we can bring 12 on.
There you go, that's perfect.
Perfect.
You don't have any problem with my grandkids riding with me?
No.
No.
As long as they're not throwing stuff at people's eyeballs.
We are, our staging time is at nine o'clock. You need to be there by nine o'clock or in the junior high parking lot. And we are green, this is what you got to be looking for, is this color green, is our staging color.
Okay. Do you know, do you know what, what we're going to be in?
Number 30.
30? Okay.